This meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
On end. Can I get a roll call please?
John Junko.
Here.
Bobo Femi. Tom Jordan.
Here.
Lance Green.
Here.
Newton White.
Here.
Stan Schmidt.
Here.
Maria Mills-Benay.
Here. And consideration from last month's meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes from May twenty eighth.
Second.
Roll please.
John Junko.
I was not at the last meeting, so. Do you want me to approve them? Cause I don't know.
I think you still approve them.
Alright, yeah.
Tom Jordan.
Yes.
Lance Green.
Yes.
Newton White.
Yes.
Stan Schmidt.
Yes.
Cherry Mills-Benay.
Yes.
We voted to vote you out Johnny, sorry.
Surprise. Now you told us. I didn't get the email.
Oops. Uh, before we get started, um, welcome everybody. Thanks for coming. We're kind of excited to have people with us. Um, we, um, do not, if you are here for the apartments that are being built on Bruner Road, just to keep everybody informed, that item is not on our agenda tonight. Um, the two items concerning Bruner Road on the agenda tonight are for the east side. They are both city properties. Um, so we will be voting on those two items tonight, not on the apartments. So you're welcome to stay with us, but I just wanted to keep you guys informed and let you know that those, the apartments for, uh, Osprey Apartments are not on our agenda tonight. They will be on our agenda next month.
We talking about item ten?
The Bruner Road, there's two items for Bruner Road, but both of them are concerning city property on the east side, not the Osprey Apartments on the west side.
So nine and ten.
Yes. So, that being said, item number five, application conditional use Christ the King Community Church. Allow outdoor, outdoor church services and activities and meetings, case number twenty dash three zero 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 one. Mr. Berman.
Tim Berman, Community Development. The subject property is located at the, uh, south east corner of Spruce Creek and, um, Central Park Boulevard. Um, as indicated, this is a conditional use. Uh, the request, if you remember, the church came before you last summer for the rezoning. Property was rezoned eventually through GPU, which allows for the house of worship. Um, basically as they took over the property and kind of initially they have had church services in one of the local schools when COVID hit, they started basically looking at other ways to have church services and started to utilize the existing property there for outdoor services. Um, we contacted them and tried to work something out as a way to allow this to move forward. Um, it's kind of a unique situation that we have here. It's typically every business that you have typically requires a building to do its services, restaurants, banks, offices. This use can be conducted outside as the church has shown then. So we work with them as a way to kind of get it before to establish some parameters, um, time limits and the conditional use kind of fit in there because where the code states is that is for kind of a unique use on that site then. So that's kind of how we got to the conditional use, um, stage there. Uh, the church worked with us and we got it, you know, before you as we moved here again, you know, they had been using it initially, kind of due to COVID and we've, um, you know, now we're bringing it forward here to kind of get it set up as a conditional use. The conditional use will only be good for two years, so it would expire, um, in July twenty first, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, as indicated in staff report, there are a number of, um, improvements that they would be making here in the interim use. Um, they consist of, uh, and some of these have already been done or will be approved on, improving the exterior of the, um, monument sign at the intersection there. Uh, there's also basically designating the parking areas in the grass. I think that's one thing planning commission had talked about too for churches is allow for grass parking. Um, so they will designate multiple areas. That way we can keep the grass looking fresh. Um, as we indicated in the report, the code does state that if it becomes rutted or destroyed, it'd be required to, you know, repair that then. They are fully aware of it and that's why we kind of made the multiple locations for grass parking then. Uh, there basically be provide at least one access point off of the, um, right of way, including a concrete apron. That's mainly to make sure, um, mulch, uh, grass dirt from the tires is able to collect there versus going in the roadway. Then most likely that will be off of Spruce Creek. Uh, the church has also been working with their design professional, their engineer who's designed their permanent site to coordinate that in the exact location that it will eventually go in when they make their permanent one. That way the improvements they're making kind of go along with their permanent church improvements and. Uh, they are requesting basically to extend power to the site via an existing power pole. That will be through FPNL and building permits through our staff. Uh, provide, uh, water to the site. Also, um, they will continue to remove trash, any debris that's left over from the site during services. And also to, um, install or maintain the picnic tables, a playground, uh, for kids, uh, a shed, stage and exterior, uh, site lighting. Uh, set up for church too, in terms of any type of tents that are greater than pi- ten by ten will require a building permit. And the church is understanding that basically those would be for only limited time in terms of up and down, so they will not be there over an extended period of time. Uh, similar to conditional u- or special exception use, there were a number of conditions that staff had to review. Um, we outlined those in the report here. Uh, nothing basically jumped out as something that could not be addressed by the church as we move to the conditional use or, um, there was not sufficient capacity such as roadway capacity or parking then. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use, uh, subject to the conditions that are provided in the staff report. Um, basically mainly in terms of limitation, also complying with the noise ordinance, which is already established, lighting, um, et cetera then. And then the requirements for those improvements that we talked about to be made, um, there. The applicant, it's also here and they can further discuss their request if you like.
Awesome. Any questions for Tim? John?
Uh, no, I don't.
Is there a requirement on the tents being removed nightly or anything? Can they keep them up for multiple days?
With the typically we see with any type of, you know, large tent there, it's usually about two to, two to three day period to put them up. And then, you know, we talked with the church that when we issued a building permit, it most likely would be allowed to be installed as of Friday and removed, you know, two to three day, two days after a service. And so most likely, you know, up on a Thursday, Friday, down on a Tuesday then.
Alright, so there's a time span.
Yeah, that's what we kind of discussed with them and they can kind of go more into the detail as to like when an actual tent would be most likely done. Um, they might, you know, they just want to have that more as they, we wanted to put in the conditional use, so it's there. If it doesn't get used, it'll get used, but you always want to put in there just in case it's established and we kind of talk, talk them with those timeframes that would be on a building permit.
Good, thank you.
Stan?
So regarding the tent then, uh, on the drawing that's here, the site drawing, they've got a large tent that's drawn in there. Possibly the building when it gets done, but let's just say it was a, a wet weekend. Could they show up, individual families could show up with their little ten by ten foot tents? That's not going to have any trouble with the city or.
Those are the same pop-up tents that you see over at family days? As long as it's ten by ten, those do not require the permits then, and though they're popped up and put down, you know, within a few minutes then, so.
So there's no issue on that one. And, um, there's currently access off of, not Spruce Creek, but what's the?
Central Park.
Correct. Uh, toward the end of that thing and that's, I think that's where they're currently accessing the property. Is that though, is that one of the driveways? That's going to be cemented in or concreted?
That could be one of them. They can have access, permanent access in the future off of either, um, roadway then. Um, they can kind of speak to which one they prefer to. They're indicated to us most likely that they would pave the, or concrete the one off of Spruce Creek. Um, but either one could be done or just the one we're requiring then.
I haven't bicycled that far yet, so I haven't seen the end of the property over there.
Slacker.
Yeah, I know, I am. Um, so basically this is just sort of making the paperwork fit what's on the ground, the facts on the ground.
Correct. And then, you know, as we indicated too, they are currently working on the permanent site plan and permanent improvements.
Right.
And they can speak to kind of their timeframe, but they, you know, indicated to us that they would prefer not to have this that long. It would prefer to have a permanent home on that property then. So they are continuing to work with the design of the actual site and building them too. And they can provide more of an update onto where they are with those since we don't have those plans here in the city at this time.
Yeah, that's all I need.
Newton?
No, I'm actually good with this. I, um, I actually ran into Pastor Kirchner, uh, when I was out doing one of my morning walks and he was out, uh, doing some of the, uh, maintenance work on the site with a weed whacker. And, um, I live right down the street from it obviously and, um, I'm good with this.
Okay, Lance?
Tim, you noted that we were providing water to the site. How are they getting water via just a standard commercial meter? Or how is, is there an impact fees established for a property like this? Or how does that work when we're providing utilities to a piece of property that's on a, on a, this type of use?
There's a couple things they're looking for in terms of water. They're basically, you know, going to look for basically access to, there's an existing water meter on site. There is also the.
That was for what?
We don't, I mean, it basically has been vacant for a long period of time at that site, but there's an existing meter serving that site then, according to our records then.
There's a house bar.
There's a house on there before that's been demoed. There's also a well on the property. So there's different avenues to basically get water on the site, um, there. Uh, for that, they're also looking to see, you know, they were interested in seeing about reclaim for some of the landscaping. But basically, you know, there will be the irrigation well for landscaping and then the, you know, the portable water is there for the, you know, wash hands, cleanup equipment, et cetera then that they would like to have on there.
Eventually it's got to be converted to a commercial and a commercial account, a commercial.
Yeah.
And then, and we're talking about impact fees of, you know, water sewer impacts and those things, right?
Yeah, when they develop, they will have to pay all the impact fees that are required. Now there will be impact fee credits because there is an existing single family home on there then.
Right, right.
So we'd have to, you know, make those conversions then at that then, because a commercial building is based off your drainage fixture units, so you have to count that then. But we would, anything we do with any terms of water for this site, the conditional use will comply with code and if there are fees necessary.
But it's just water, we're not providing a sewer for this water that you're providing. Okay, right?
There's sewer service there, are they not going to hook up?
But we're not.
Not for the conditional use.
Yeah.
Not for, yeah.
And the site plan, again, that's a different thing.
Down the road, down the road.
Regarding this, the conditional use right now.
Water hose, for the most part.
Yes.
Okay.
Will they require portables?
Portable restaurants, you mean?
Yeah.
It's not required, basically there's a portable unit there, which will be part of the screening enclosure that will be put there wrapped around then.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, can we hear from the applicant, Pastor Kirchner?
Hey.
Please introduce yourself.
Absolutely, uh, lady and gentleman. Good to be with you tonight. I'm excited about this. Came before you last year. My name is Scott Kirchner. For those that maybe, uh, not know who I am, I'm the, uh, pastor of Christ the King Community Church and very excited to be here. We've been in existence for ten years. Uh, we started in two thousand and ten. We're meeting in Cypress Creek Elementary School. I have a long time connection with Port Orange. My, my father's here this evening. We moved here in nineteen eighty. I lived in the woods subdivision just up the street when, uh, Spruce Creek still had gravel road going all the way down past all children's park and, uh, so have a long connection with, uh, this area and in the Volusia County area. So I'm, I'm glad to be, um, in this position and our church is happy to be in this position. When we came before you last year, we wanted to purchase this property. It was over a half a million dollars. Uh, we were able to get the rezoning necessary. All the financing secured our closing in December and have been hard at work out there. I'm telling you, I'm exhausted from all the work that we've done, but it's exciting. Uh, the, uh, when we bought the property, I do have some pictures for you because I know pictures speak, uh, louder than words do. And so I've got some pictures here to show you when this is, uh, when we first bought the property, uh, I believe this is this picture right here. Uh, this is what it looked like. It was, uh, very much a jungle. Uh, the property was, um, pretty much unkept, left untouched. There had been a lot of, uh, it was a neighborhood hangout for a lot of kids. They rode dirt bikes in there, which, you know, wasn't necessarily a bad thing. But I believe the property owners were concerned about safety and liability and put no trespassing signs up. The old house that was on that property, we paid to get it removed. There was a lot of shenanigans that went on in there. It had been vandalized and graffitied and there was, uh, I, I'm afraid I hear, you know, I work with youth in the area. There was some drug abuse going on and just some nonsense. So we have cleared and opened up the property and I want to make it clear in this public forum that it's open to public use. We privately own it, but we are happy to share it with our community because that's why we're there. We are a community minded church. It's a part of our name, but it's not just a part of our name. It's a part of our DNA. It's a part of our character. We're here for the community. We want to bring value. Uh, this next picture here is a picture of, uh, some of the pictures of what we've done since then. Uh, there's our temporary sign that we got a permit for on the property and you can see already that, that area, how it cleaned up it is. If you live down that way, you can see, uh, what's been going on and just, just to give you a visual, this is Spruce Creek Road that you see on the, on the right of that picture there and, uh, looking down towards the south. Uh, this is, there is actually already a skirt and an apron there on the entryway and, uh, it's asphalt and this is off of Spruce Creek Road right here that we've been using as our primary use. Um, this is just some pictures of the, that's the fire station off in the distance there in the far left of the picture, uh, but that's just our outdoor space that we've been using. And you know, like many churches that are in this area who are new churches that have been meeting in schools, we came across a dilemma that none of us have ever faced in our lifetime, that my parents have never faced, and that's this COVID crisis that we've, uh, encountered. And it pretty much left us homeless as a church. You know, when you meet in a school and you're required to use their facilities, uh, it left us, you know, in a, uh, little bit of a pickle. Uh, but thankfully we had secured this property and already been cleaning up and doing work out there and it gave us a space that people actually really love. They love coming out there. They love being able to spread out, be in the fresh air and enjoy the outdoors. Uh, we've created an outdoor space that I call God's Chapel and it's just beautiful. We hope to keep this space and keep as much of the natural beauty as possible uh, under these big beautiful oak trees. Uh, you're welcome to come out and check it out. This is just, uh, pictures taking, uh, kind of panning to the right. Uh, my friend Dave here, that's his house in the, in the, uh, background. He's to the south of us and owns the farm along the south. And, uh, that's just some more pictures. This is a picture of our outdoor space, uh, that we've created. Uh, the stage sits on top of the ground. We've got some pavers. We put some of our equipment on, um, and, uh, so picnic tables there and just a, like I said, a beautiful space for our people to enjoy and they love it. Um, they don't want to go back to the school. Uh, they love this space and they love using it and, uh, we've had a lot of our neighbors come, some of who are here this evening and, uh, they, they enjoy what we're doing there. These are some of our workers. I coach track. These are some of my little track athletes and some, some of my church members who have come out and helped us make this space more usable and, uh, make it valuable. And I believe it is of value to the community. It's, it's changed quite a bit and, uh, we're, we're proud to be there appreciate your consideration and allowing us to continue to do this and, uh, make, uh, Port Orange, uh, a better place, um, for all of our neighbors.
Thank you. Questions? Lance?
Um, I don't have any. Um, Scott and I, we talked again and again, you know, the, the, the one thing about this particular property was its uniqueness and its, and its beauty and, and I think you guys have an understanding that trying to keep that, that property looking, you know, as natural as possible is going to be important for the community and I think it's going to really provide back to the community once we're, once they are done with, uh, you know, at least keeping the historical trees on the property is, is important.
That's our, that's our desire.
Yep.
Yeah.
Newton?
No, I'm good.
Stan?
I'm good.
Tom?
No, Pastor Scott was kind enough to spend a few minutes with me on the phone and answered all my questions and, uh, I think it's, I think it's a great, uh, addition to the neighborhood. That could have worked really well. Thanks.
John?
No, um, as, uh, he, he spoke with me on the phone too and I answered any of, uh, the concerns, which seemed to be the common concerns and, uh, um, everything looks really nice and these are unusual times and we have to do what we can, considering he can't meet at the school. And it's a beautiful shady place too, so, yeah, no, I'm very happy for him.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I, um, I love what you've done with the property. I've been by there a few times. I think it looks amazing. I'm going to show up one day randomly with a hammock.
Just connect it to some trees. Yeah.
Uh, maybe everybody should come with a hammock to listen to you preach. I mean, maybe that's just how we need to roll around here. Um, but I, I absolutely love what you've done with the place. Um, I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I have an ice cream social there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Just so you know too, we have plans, uh, we, uh, had looked at different ways for us to utilize this property, but now that we're on it and we enjoy it so much, we do have plans. Uh, we'll be coming back before you with. Our architect is already working on the drawings. Robert Hall is our architect. Peter Zahn is our civil engineer. Uh, Eric Olson is our builder and, uh, we were already working on floor plans for our first building, which will be a multi-purpose building. It'll be back near the, uh, um, just outside of the wetland area, uh, along Dave's, uh, farm over there and it's going to be a beautiful multi-purpose building that'll be, uh, really nice looking for our community and, and open to our community. So we're excited about that. If there's any questions or concerns that, that anyone from the public has, I'd love to be able to come back and address those if that's possible at the end.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Um, just so everyone is aware too, the commissioners have received two letters from members of the church, um, neighbors in favor of, of this temporary use. Any comments from the public? When you come up, please state your name and address.
Brian Spies, four twelve Nash Lane in Port Orange. Um, I have a couple of points here, like more than that. Um, timeframe that we're talking about for this temporary use is way too long. Two years is ridiculous to have to have people outside and there's furniture out there right now. And to me, i- it looks like a flea market. You know what I mean? It, it, to me, it's ridiculous. Uh, and the grass won't stay fresh. I mean, you have cars that go on grass. It's going to get torn up. And you can't keep that fresh. That's really what I was, uh, thinking about as I was listening. I have other points before I got here too. And the five days, uh, for a tent to stay up just to take it down for two days is too long, you know? Uh, in the ideal situation for the residents like myself that live there, it, the stuff needs to go up for Sunday or whatever day they're going to do their service and come down. I mean, it's still a property and again, you, with tents going up, uh, you're going to make it look like a flea market. Um, I have pictures here that my wife has sent me that there have been, uh, more than one temporary sign there, uh, since April. So that excludes the thirty days right there that it's supposed to be and more than one sign. Um, they, um, they have kids that are, like he was saying about the track use. There, there, we've had to call them once about this and they're running all around and they're going in the park. I, I had a conversation with Mr. Kirchner today, so I did address this stuff with him before. Um, he's, he told me that they have insurance for liability, you know, with these kids running around. And that's fine. Uh, that's just as long as this board knows that, that, that's an issue, you know? And also, um, traffic, uh, you know, when these people are coming in for, um, services, you know, they're, they're not mindful of the pedestrians. He said that he was going to, you know, talk with his parish about that. That's a concern. That's a safety concern, you know? We talked about noise, not that I've heard it, but I don't want it to become an issue, especially with this being outside. I mean, and we're talking about the whole COVID thing. Everybody in this world is c- I mean, inconvenienced from COVID. So have it in the parking lot where you have it, if you can't get in the building if it's not safe. But to bring it to a neighborhood where you're just going to make it an eyesore is just not a solution to me. Um, so I just, I just have a lot of problems with this.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address when you come up.
My name is Vandila Dollar, sixty thirty-five Dalford Road, Port Orange. Longtime resident since eighty-one. I'm right off of Newton. Um, I have watched this whole city grow since eighty-one and I have prayed about what would ever become of the little town of Port Orange and Spruce Creek Road. I have attended this outdoor church, beautiful property, having kids that were in that abandoned house, running all over that property. I think this church could not fit in better to the lifestyle we have down there with our friendly neighbor's ice cream store, the all children's park. That area has remained family friendly and not only myself enjoy going to the outdoor church and can't wait to see the progress with it, but my family, my son, my twin brother. Um, my children have been out there running around, doing track, doing yard work and have more structure and are not running anywhere else. Um, I couldn't be more in favor for this perfect fit that has blessed us on the corner of Spruce Creek and Central Park with the fire station and all. And I fully intend on keep going and it's a great place for kids, families, and I welcome all of you to come out and see us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? None? Commissioner comments? Lance? Commissioner comments, Lance?
Um, I do have a couple. Tim, could you come up? So again, appearance is going to be a big thing. And I know we've talked about the screening that they're going to have around the equipment that they have. They're going to have screening around the, around the temporary toilet and, and those things. In this conditional use, I mean, are we, are we stringent about screening of things? And again, I, I want to, I want to listen to the concerns of the residents and I want to hear, you know, that make sure that we we're keeping the property correct for the next two years until they can build. And I understand as a contractor, I know it takes a long time to build, trust me. I know it takes a long time to design, it takes a long time to get engineering, it's, there's a lot involved with getting this building up. So we are talking about a couple of years. So in that two years, I want to make sure that that property is kept correct. Um, and in this is, like, is that at the driveway? Is there required to be a stop sign? Is there a stop bar? Is there any of this traffic type of things that were?
Yes, all that will be required. We basically, there will be permits provided, they will comply, as we indicated, comply with the code. Setbacks, stop bars, stop signs, that'll be required in terms of the outdoor screening. That'll be an opaque fence that'll enclose and keep everything together there. It is more of a residential feel when you drive down there. So basically utilization of, you know, a wood stockade fence would be compatible with that area. Driven it for six years every day, that would fit into that area then. Those are things that we'll be looking at as a, you know, I'm also a resident who lives down there too and want to make sure it's kept nicely.
Okay.
Um, so we, you know, we basically, you know, talked to the church, those will all come in and building permits then. Um, and you know, when we get those, we'll finalize them, but they will basically comply with the same codes that something on Dunlawn Avenue, um, Taylor Road, Nova Road would comply with them.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Newton?
I, I would say one, one of my concerns that, that was addressed in this was that it's a conditional use permit. It's got a timeframe on it, it expires or would need to be renewed. And it is conditional on this tenant, this person that owns it. So if something happens with the church like the other pink building at Madeline and Williamson, this use goes away with them. So it's, this is going to be a church for the two years and then they'll have a building. So my, my concern was that we don't put this on there forever and then wind up having who knows what else in the place. So I, I did want to say that that was part of my consideration in this as well.
Stan?
Um, I was a little bit initially concerned about noise in the neighborhood, but it looks like uh, pastors going around talking to neighbors and it sounds like everybody's fine and living with it. Um, I've been pastor a couple of times on my bicycle early, um, so they probably weren't cranked up yet. But uh, I didn't have any problem with it. Um, you know, this is like, like Lance said, it takes time to get these things going. And uh, they want to do it right. And uh, I think this addresses the issues they're going to need to put up with until they get their building going.
Tom?
I have been known to be a stickler for deadlines and timeframes and brought those up. And I, I think the two years is reasonable, I understand what you're saying, I really do. Um, but it does take time to build these kinds of projects. You've got an opportunity to have some really good activity down there and I think, I think this balances out really well.
John?
Uh, yeah, it's, what I mentioned earlier on is my concern is uh, this is, and at times this could be looked at as an outdoor concert. There's going to be singing, there's going to be a group of people gathering uh, during religious services. But when someone does that, they're required to have portables. You have water facilities, you have children playing in the playground, there's going to be variations of activities and events here. I think uh, portable is probably something that should be addressed.
There is a portable on site, which will remain, which will be part of the screening. If they ever do any further special events, like we indicated churches have, you know, the pumpkin fest and stuff like that, then more might need to be brought at that time. But there is a portable on the site and that'll be part of the screening that will wrap in there to screen it from the site then.
Because those come when they're special events.
Those come through a special event permit process, which are totally separate there than this. They would follow us like the other churches on Dunlawn have been too, they would go through that separate process.
Now, that's based on, because they were calculating the engineering was like parking for two hundred people?
I think they indicated that basically they had about a hundred twenty-five. There was two hundred fifty membership, what could potentially be. We base that, if that was basically submitted to us in terms of a parking requirement for our land development code, range between, you know, sixty to eighty-five spaces would be required if you're developing it per code then. So based off of where they designated and basically the space that could be there, that would be achievable.
Does uh, the calculations of people addressing this also calculate the amount of portables that should be on the property?
We don't have a portable ratio requirement in our code. And basically, I think it would be that how the church membership feels basically in terms of access to a portable.
Okay. I've uh, had my portables in job sites, especially with masons and roofers and trust me, I could probably use two sometimes, so. All right, well, that was a concern, I just want to make sure.
There are a lot of trees.
Yeah, a lot of trees.
Scott? Just want to come back up.
Well, listen, I, I welcome any concerns or questions from anyone in our community. And I, and I have addressed with some of our neighbors who may have had concerns and talked with them like good neighbors should. And, and Brian's my neighbor and will continue to be my neighbor and I will show him love and respect like I will any other neighbor. But I can respectfully disagree as well, you know, I um, believe that the property looks much better than it did before. It was unkept, it was unsightly, it looked like a jungle. Uh, and we have done our very best, we, we want to do things right and with excellence. And uh, you know, if there's ever any issue with code or any issue that anyone has, we want to address that concern and we want to do our best to make things look nice and look welcoming. And like I said, it's open to the community, it's a community place. When you go to a park, there are picnic tables. When you go to a park, there are gathering a- areas, that's part of a park. And, and we have a park feel there and we look to keep that. And uh, you know, we can agree to disagree, I can show love and respect to, to Brian and, and whoever else may disagree with me. But uh, at the end of the day, we, we want to make our neighborhood better, we want to bring value to it. Uh, we've already invested, you know, with, besides our loan that we've gotten, we've personally invested, we're pushing almost two hundred thousand dollars on this property, uh, just in making it better, bringing in improvements, bringing down the old house. We spent almost ten grand just to take down that old abandoned house that was an eyesore and was a, it was problem, problematic. There was hazards there and liability and we, we brought it down. And our people are all in this together, we've got good people from the neighborhood. Um, and uh, people are always welcome, whether they agree with us or not. I mean, we're, we're, like I said, we're a community church, we're here for our community. And we appreciate your consideration and uh, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to address those that you might have.
Thank you so much.
Yes. So again, obviously you know the importance of this and again, I, and I think so far, thus far, you, you've, you've done that and, and you understand the importance of that piece of property. You know, this is a vital little piece of property down, it's the last, it's part of the last of the last down there when it comes to it. And same was, same with Hensel Hill. So the importance of it, I think, is, you know, you understand and um, and, but at the same token is I feel that you're, you're going to fit perfect in this community there. Uh, for the next two years though, I understand the struggles you're going to go through by, by getting this building it up. Okay, I understand that.
Right.
Um, so for the next two years, you know, you, you're going to just make sure that we're neighborly and we're tight and we're, we're screened and we're, we're not looking like a flea market.
Absolutely.
And it, and I understand the same.
Sure.
You know, but I, I welcome you that I think you're going to, I think you'll fit well, just bear with us for the two years.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the same on our, on our behalf, you know, that we're a young church and we're growing and, and as we can afford, we're, we're making improvements. But like I said, we've already put a couple hundred thousand dollars in this property and we'll continue to put investment into it because we know it's a beautiful place, we want to be there, we want to bless people and not, you know, not cause them problems or be a thorn in their side. And that, and that's our goal and we want to do things right and with excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Man, I made motions all last month, tired. Make a motion to approve case number two zero dash three zero 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 one. Uh, subject to staff recommendations, is that right? Including staff recommendations.
Second.
Roll please.
John Junko?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Lance Green?
Yes.
Newton White?
Yes.
Stan Schmidt?
Yes.
Chair Mills Benet?
Yes. Thank you so much. Next up is item number six. First Amendment to the Newport Planned Unit Development Master Development Agreement, case number two zero dash four zero 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 two.
Where's Lee?
Oh, we had such a good group there for a minute. And we get one penny.
Yeah, oh, I don't have a PowerPoint for this one, I forgot.
But it's a shiny penny.
It's a shiny penny.
Penelope Cruz Planning. Um, so as you all recall, a couple of years ago, the Newport Apartments PUD was approved. I came before you for a three hundred and ten unit multifamily um, development. Construction actually started this past March and is anticipated to take approximately twenty-two months. Um, as with most multifamily developments, it's a pretty long process to get the overall site completed. Um, and as you've been aware over the past several years, um, all the multifamily developments that have been under construction in the city going back to um, Hawthorne Grove, White Palm, the reserve at West, um, Westport, the springs right now have been constructed as a phased construction. Um, meaning that either one building at a time or multiple buildings in a phase um, would receive their COs subject to all the site improvements um, in that area, in that phase, being completed, reviewed, inspected by staff and accept, um, and accepted. So unfortunately, the Newport PUD stated that it would be completed in one phase. Um, so as they started this construction, the applicants come back and request that they're, that they too are able to construct the remaining um, site in a phased process, similar to all other multifamily developments in the city. Um, and in accordance with the regulations of the land development code. So that's really the only request before you today. Uh, no changes to the actual uh, development parameters in the PUD. Um, no increase to any kind of units or any changes to setbacks or anything like that. It's really, it's just asking to be able to phase the remainder of the construction, similar to all the other multifamily developments that have been constructed and are currently under construction in the city. Um, so with that, um, I can answer any questions you have, the applicant's also here if you'd like to, I believe, if you'd like to um, ask them any questions.
Questions for Penny, John?
Uh, just curious, uh, how are they going to break it down in phases? Because I didn't see which was designated phase one and phase two.
We don't have a phasing plan yet. If this were to get approved, they would have to submit a phasing plan to staff. Everybody in the staff development review committee would um, review that and make sure that the phasing makes sense um, as far as infrastructure is concerned, access, things like that. Um, and then once that's approved, then they would be able to continue on with a phased construction.
Okay, no, that's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome. Tom?
Do we have, how, how do we manage then the common areas, access, utilities?
So typically.
Things like that?
So typically, um, and again, we don't have their phasing plan, but typically what's happened over the years with other developments, um, all the multifamily developments and also the pavilion at Port Orange. Um, all the underground infrastructure is part of phase one. So you've got all your utilities, uh, water, sewer, stormwater system, everything's in place with phase one. Um, and then after, and then also with phase one is typically like the first building and maybe the clubhouse usually because they want to be able to use that for leasing. Um, and then you kind of, they usually work their way around, you know, and kind of, they usually pick one side and, and construct buildings um, as they move from one side of the property to the other. Everything in that area, all your points of access, your paving, um, your, you know, your parking areas, ADA parking, all that, bike parking, um, all the landscaping around that area, usually perimeter park uh, buffers are typically part of phase one. Um, and then what happens in future phases is just individual buildings usually, maybe one or two or one building at a time. Same thing that's going on with um, the springs right now. Like I just went to a, an inspection for one building back in the corner this morning.
So the front of it won't look like an eyesore or look like it's?
No, so I mean, staff would require that, you know, those landscape buffers on the roadways would be part of phase one.
Got it.
You said typically.
I mean, that's what, that's what.
What's happened here? Have they got all the, all those?
That's what, we haven't received their phasing plan to review yet, but we've already let them know that that's what we're going to be looking for.
Okay, all right, so that'll be done, okay.
Stan?
So they've already started construction, so right now, has it just been the underground stuff, some of the roadway? So you really can't tell like buildings and that kind of stuff yet?
Yeah, I mean, they have their permits, um, but right now, I mean, just like with all construction, you start with your underground infrastructure.
Right.
So that's what they're doing, but um, as they start to go vertical, they want to be able to get a CO for, you know, one building. It lets that income come in.
We've got some idea what phase one is probably.
Yeah, I mean, phase one is always for, would have to be all your underground infrastructure, um, your buffers. Uh, and then usually it involves, um, you know, at least uh, in addition to maybe the first building. Typically, most multifamily developments like to have their clubhouse at least built so they can use that for, for leasing.
Some of the paving.
But yeah, mm-hmm. Like I said, we haven't seen their plan, but that's all the other multifamily developments, that's what's been the case.
So given the fact we're going to do this phasing, um, they're still going to be able to get this thing done in twenty-two months?
That's what they've said. Mm-hmm. It's really, um, it doesn't change the timeframe of the construction, it's just that you can get your CO for one building without having to wait for the entire thing. You can get that leased up while you're still, and, and a lot of times it's, you're going to a final inspection for one building on Monday. You might go to the other one next week, you know, it might just be one week apart.
Right.
That you're going, so we've been out to the springs a lot. Building by building.
That's it?
Yeah.
Newton?
Already covered.
Lance?
I'm confused. So we don't have a phasing plan, but yet we're doing site work and we've a, we, we have a permit for site work, but yet is it based on this site?
So there's.
Is there an approved site?
Yeah, there's an approved site plan.
Okay, so there's an approved site plan that's already passed, all the, all the parameters, all the buffers, all the, all the landscape, okay?
Yeah, they have an approved site plan, they're, they started construction as if, because if, for example, if this were to get denied, they would have to just finish construction as one phase. So they're, they're starting construction per their approved site plan. The phasing plan doesn't change their site plan, their approved site plan, it just allows them to phase that CO.
So you're only talking about phasing COs of buildings?
Yeah.
But, because why did we, why did we set this upfront that we weren't going to do it this way?
That's what they wanted to put in their MDA, they could speak to that. Um, staff asked if they wanted it to be phased, um, they wrote in their MDA one phase, but I think as time went on, they reconsidered that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Do you guys want to hear from the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I thought so.
Mr. Brock?
Good evening, Jeff Brock, four 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 Seabreeze Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Um, we are not, when some people think phasing, they think a development and they go away for years and come then back and do phase two. This is what Penelope said, we're just bringing on the buildings as they're completed, getting COs just for those buildings so they can start up the leasing process. And also think in terms, I know a lot of you've got construction background, you don't want to put that top layer of asphalt on the whole parking lot while you're still having construction trucks coming in and out. So you kind of do it in a little pod where you've got a clubhouse and a building and maybe a couple of buildings that you bring online, lease them up, finish the, you know, top level of the parking stripe et cetera, while you've got some construction trucks over on this side, so it just kind of moves across. Um, as to the question on why this wasn't in a, in the PD, it should have been, it's just a mistake. Uh, I think it was, the question was asked about phasing, it was more the traditional, I'm going to build some, go away and come back. It was, the response was, we're going to build them all at the same time, but we want the ability to bring buildings online as they're completed. So that's the request, not that we're going to go away, it's, it's going to be a contiguous uh, project, just bringing buildings online as they're done.
Awesome. Questions?
So, so all the site works being done upfront for the most part, and, and outside of building pads being ready kind of thing, you'll, the entire site, site work, this was a dump, wasn't it?
Part of the project, yes. But that, there's not going to be instructors on the dump, yeah. So they cleared, if you go out there, they've done a little uh, road work in, upfront. And so they're doing the underground utilities and so they'll.
And digging the pond?
Plan and the stormwater, so all the site work will be done in phase one.
So when we're clearing land, and I'm just looking at, and I'm just looking at vehicle traffic down the line as we, as we get through this thing. And I'm looking at construction vehicles pulling out into Clyde Morris and, and I don't know, if school's going to be starting down the line. You're, you're next to the school, so I'm looking at construction and construction vehicles and those things and, you know, the big trucks and, and those things is, is, if the site work was done and we're building buildings, it's not as bad as you're out there hauling trees off the site.
Right, yeah.
So all the land clearance going to be done upfront, the ponds, basically for the most part, you'll have limestone tacked, tacked roadways.
And the trucks are coming in between the, the buildings off of Clyde Morris, the construction entrance, if you've seen that. And then the other entrance over near the high school is, is not as used as much, the big. The big dump trucks right now are coming in and out off of-
And a lot of it's already cleared.
It's already cleared, yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Newton?
I'm good.
Stan?
That's it for me.
Tom?
Uh, so I mean, basically you're saying-
So when the phasing plan, like Penelope said, it's gonna require the developer to do the, to make the front look good with the-
So the MDA is going to read that you will do all of Phase One, which includes all of the necessary utilities? This is just so you can be able to do a CO, building by building?
Exactly.
Alright.
Alright, and that, the approval of the phasing plan will require-
What you guys chose not to do originally.
Right, right, the buffering, the buffers out front, the utilities, et cetera.
All, all that gets done?
Right.
John?
No questions.
I get it.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? Anyone wish to speak to this? I don't like this, this thing here, I can't see all the people hiding behind it.
Just Robert.
Oh, it's just Robert, hi, Robert. No comments from the public? Last comments from the Commissioner, Lance?
No.
Newton?
No.
Stan?
No.
Tom?
I just, Penny, can I ask you another question here? I just wanna clarify this, cause, so is the MDA then, will, will the MDA, is that where we're doing the MDA, right?
Yeah.
So will the MDA read that, here's all the things that they'll have to have done?
No, it, the MDA is in your packet.
Right.
It, it says it's to allow it to be phased in accordance with the Land Development-
Yeah, I'm talking about the Phase One requirement, so how do, how do we know they're done?
Because we are gonna review it, where it's part, it's gonna be part of their site construction permit will be modified to include a, a phasing sheet that spells out not only show the phasing lines on the plan, but it'll also have, um, it'll also have notes on the side that says Phase One includes, and staff will prove that, Stan, it's part of their stamp set.
So like one of those things would be all the perimeter landscaping?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, alright, that's what makes sure there's accountability.
With the Springs?
Oh, I get that, yeah, I just, it's just weird, usually we do that upfront and that's the way everybody knows it's gonna happen.
Yeah, usually you don't even see that, it's part of just a site plan approval. It's just, the reason we couldn't do it as in-house as part of the site plan approval is because their legal documents said one phase.
Right.
But you're talking about landscape buffers around the entire paro- uh, the entire property, the perimeter, all that, all that's in Phase One?
That's what staff is gonna be looking for, like I said, I don't know what they're gonna submit at this time, but staff typically looks for that. Um, they may ask to not do, um, the buffer along, say, Rachel, I, because that might be the last part of their phasing. I don't know what they're gonna request, but staff has already made that, let them know that definitely along Reed Canal, that buffer's gotta be in Phase One, the side buffer, and then we'll explore, you know, what they wanna propose on, on Rachel. But it needs to be, you know, nice and tidy, and like I said, it's not, if any, if you were to look at it, you wouldn't tell that anything came before you. It's gonna, it's just this, it's gonna keep being, right now, the whole site's cleared, they've already been doing their underground utility, they're ready to go vertical, but they won't be able to get that first CO unless this gets approved. So, you wouldn't notice from the street that we're talking about this right now. It's, it'll look like a typical multifamily instruction project.
Okay.
John?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
I'm good, so I will entertain a motion.
Challenge, challenge and make the motion.
Okay, well, then let me scroll up to that number. Hold on, let me get the, I'm scrolling up here.
I know, I'm going to get this one.
I was following along.
Why do we have on this one?
Alright, here we go.
You got it?
Make a motion to approve case number twenty dash four zero 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 two with the recommendations from our staff.
I'll second that.
Roll please. John Junko?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Lance Green?
Yes.
Newton White?
Yes.
Stan Schmidt?
Yes.
Chairman Melvin Bynum? Yes. Alright, next up, item number seven, case number two zero dash four zero 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 three, Third Amendment to the Woodhaven PUD Master Development Agreement, to amend the Woodhaven PUD Master Development Agreement for the Woodhaven Planned Unit Development to address modifications to subdivision and lot design requirements for their future residential developments within the PUD.
Penelope Cruz Planning, um, so this Third Amendment includes three, three requests. The first is a special setback for AC units and other ground mounted equipment. The second is regarding, um, townhome uses, um, kinda in this general area here, um, south and west of Williamson and east of the Cypress Head Golf Course, and the third is regarding sidewalks. The proposed amendment does not increase the number of units allowed in the PUD or the square footage for commercial development. So the first item is regarding the special setback for AC units and ground mounted equipment. This is basically exactly what the Planning Commission approved in September of last year, um, for Phase One. Um, they've realized that this is gonna be probably an ongoing issue as they continue to develop, um, due to the, the way those more efficient units are, are designed, um, as far as their size, um, and with the, the models that are, that they're designing for Woodhaven. Um, so they wanted to kind of memorialize this for the rest of the single family development in, um, in, in Woodhaven. This is also, so the same request was approved for Phase One, it was also a similar request was approved for the Oakbrook Subdivision as well as Royal Palm Subdivision, and we also have a more reduced setback approved for the entire, um, planned community west side area of the city as well. Um, and again, basically just to be able to maintain those units, um, in the side yard, so they can still, the, the residents can still have full access of their rear yards, um, and because of the, the way those units are designed nowadays. The next item is regarding the townhome use. Um, if you can see kind of in this red outlined area, this is kind of the area that we're talking about in their, um, approved concept plan. They're requesting to be able to allow to have, uh, build townhomes with a maximum of four units, um, in this designated area. Uh, currently, their MDA states that from, from this westernmost boundary, three hundred feet in, so for those first three hundred feet, the only use that's allowed is single family and passive parks. What they're requesting is, um, to also be able to have townhomes in that area as long as there are no single family homes in the Cypress Head Subdivision, five hundred feet west of that boundary. So as you can see, that area's, um, drawn here. Within that first five hundred feet, there's no single family homes, it's just the golf course, um, and then, and that kind of stops right there. So in this residential Pod C and a portion of residential Pod D, this is kind of that area where this would apply, if you kind of measure those areas out. So that's the second request. And the third request is, um, to be able to install sidewalks on one or both sides of private streets. Um, their master development agreement right now requires a five foot wide sidewalk on both sides of the streets, unless it's a cul-de-sac that's three hundred feet or less in length. The code requires a four foot sidewalk on both sides of the streets. Um, and so they're requesting that since these are gonna be private streets, they're gonna be gated, um, so it'll be limited access. Uh, they're requesting to have the option, um, as they design future phases to be able to, if they, if they so choose to maybe put sidewalk on only one side of the street. Um, staff thought about this, we looked at it, um, we can support this request to deviation based on those streets being located in these like lower density, um, neighborhoods. They're gated communities, they're gonna have limited points of access and interconnectivity, and it would reduce, um, impervious area in that, um, in that area. So with that, staff is recommending approval, I know the applicant's here and would probably like to speak to their request as well.
Questions for Penny, Lance?
Um, not yet.
Newton?
Not yet.
Stan?
Yeah, wait a second too.
Not yet.
John?
Um, well, on, on the area that they're, on item two, where they're changing from residential homes to townhouses, it's not going to affect the, the total numbers? Okay, now, looking at the border between the Cypress Head, is there a vegetation barrier on their side?
Yeah, so they're required, so usually when it's, uh, the same kind of use, when you've got single family, single family, you aren't required to put us any kind of buffer there. Um, their PUD requires a fifty foot buffer, that doesn't change with this. So density doesn't change, the requirement to have a fifty foot buffer along that western edge doesn't change. Um, it's just the type of residential, and it's, uh, similar to the way they've designed Phase One. So, you know, off the road, they've got their townhomes, and then to as kind of a buffer from the road, you've got townhomes and they've got their single family behind that. So they're kind, you know, looking to do a similar kind of design where off Williamson, you've got townhomes, single family back behind that, and since there's only the golf course next to it, you're not impacting other single family homes, um, they, you know, they thought that would be a reasonable request.
That's, is that about a third of the property they wanna start converting it into townhouses?
I, I don't know that that's gonna be everywhere in this red area, they could speak to that, um, but this is the area where that requirement could be an option, whether they utilize the whole area or not.
Okay, now the, the property to the south of that in question, are there any existing areas below that area that is designated for townhouses?
So down further south, um, kind of at the intersection of Williamson and Pioneer and ninety-five, that part of the PUD is designated for mixed use.
Okay.
And that's been like that since two thousand thirteen.
So right now, you're looking at almost, if this would go through, they'd have the flexibility of potentially having most of that area a townhouse?
They could speak to what their actual plan is, um, like I said, this gives you the, the flexibility in the area. It's not to say that the entire pod is gonna be designed for townhomes.
Alright.
They could speak to what their plans are.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Please introduce yourself.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Dick Smith, I'm with ICI Homes, uh, sixty thirty-five Sanctuary Garden Boulevard in Port Orange. First of all, thank you for, uh, Penelope and Tim being great to work with as, as well as the rest of the staff. A couple of things that I did wanna add, I did wanna reiterate that, uh, the fifty foot buffer between our property and Cypress Head is not going away. Primarily where we're looking to do these townhomes is next to the golf course maintenance facility. It's not really golf course frontage property, it's next to the golf course maintenance facility relative to the, the townhomes, um, and we just think that's a, a better use rather than a single family in that particular location. As far as the other issues that, that we're, that we're looking for, I don't really have anything specific to add, um, but I certainly can answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Lance?
No.
Newton?
Why are you looking to build townhomes rather than single family? If you're not adding more, if you're not adding more units, what, what would be the gain, what would be the purpose?
Well, similar to what we're doing in Phase One, we offer three different products. We have townhomes, we have fifty foot lots, and we have sixty foot lots, and we try to target those to different areas of the market, and so we feel like that captures, uh, a broader spectrum and, and more, a wider range of buyers. Um, if we do all single family, uh, fifties and sixty footers, we feel like we're missing out on a pretty significant part of the market. Those townhomes appeal much more to the retiree and also to, um, um, you know, empty nesters, uh, single moms and those types of folks. And so we just feel like it's a, um, a, a better offering to add.
What do you, um, you're gonna save some land with this, obviously, cause you're not gonna have, have setbacks between three and four units. So where's the extra real estate going?
Well, we're not, we're not getting any more units, uh, than we're currently approved for.
Correct.
Um, it'll give us more opportunities to do open space and parks, but none of that's been decided at this point.
Stan?
Well, kind of related to that, on, on a townhouse, then do the air conditioning units end up on the end? If you've got four unit townhouse, the air conditioning unit's gonna be on the end of the building for the, probably two units on each side?
Well, on the two end units, cause we're, we're, we've agreed to be restricted to four, four unit buildings.
Right.
Um, on the two middle units, they'll be on the back.
Oh, they'll be in the back?
Yes, on the two middle units.
Okay.
Cause the, the middle units have a building, have another unit right next to it.
Right.
So that's the only option. On the, uh, on the end unit, and these are fee simple, by the way, so these individual owners own their entire lot.
Okay.
Uh, on the end units, it'll be on the sides.
That's what I was trying to figure out, because when you talk about the setbacks, you didn't want air conditioning in the backyard, so they can develop the backyard, but here-
That does not, that variance that we're asking for-
Right.
-to continue from Phase One does not apply to townhome units. The setbacks between buildings there is fifteen feet.
Right.
Seven and a half on each side, so we don't need the variance for that there.
Yeah, obviously, cause they're butt ragged against each other.
Correct.
But I was just trying to figure out, in one phase, you're telling me that you don't want anything in the backyard, but now in this one, you're saying, well, we're gonna have to have two units in the backyard, that, that's all.
Okay, well, that, that, that applies to the single family, not to the townhome units?
I, I understand.
Okay.
I understand, okay.
Tom?
Yeah, so I'm curious about the sidewalks, you, so you only want sidewalks on one side of a street?
Yes, and our experience has been, um, in our, particularly in our Plantation Bay community, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with that community, it's in, uh, North Ormond. It is our, it is our premier community, it's our highest end community in, uh, in, uh, in this area. We have sidewalks on one side of the street, and what we found functionally is that, first of all, it's, it's, uh, less impervious surface, which is beneficial. Uh, but also from the parking standpoint, you're not dealing with cars parking over the sidewalks, therefore you end up with more, more off-street parking, you have less issues with the on-street parking. Um, and generally speaking, we feel like the one sidewalk is sufficient. I can tell you anecdotally, uh, with so many people walking now, what I've noticed and what we've noticed in our community is half the people use the road anyway, um, but, but if you're wanting to use the sidewalk, you've, you've got the opportunity to use that right across the street if there's not one in front of your property.
Correct.
John?
Um, back on my, uh, question regarding the townhomes, you already have a tentative plan to the south of this area in regards to how you're developing it from residential homes to townhouses, correct?
Uh, not south of this, these two pods, we haven't really laid anything out. We have, you know, we have our PUD zoning which allows mixed use, uh, but we have not laid lots on, on those, on those parcels yet.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yes.
My question was about sidewalks as well, if you're only gonna do sidewalks on one side of the road, are they going to be wider?
They'll be five feet wide.
Five feet wide, okay. I think that's it, anybody else?
Would, I, I do have difficulty with sidewalk because I do walk and I do wind up walking in the street, and a lot of that is because people are parked across the driveways, people's sprinklers are sprinkling on you, and, but there is one subdivision, and it's odd because the community center of the subdivision has no sidewalks that lead to it. You go from two-thirds of the community to get there, and unless you go across the little bridge on the backside of it, there's no sidewalk to it. So if you wanna get there by foot, you have to walk in the road. So I wanna make sure that staff is conscious of that and make sure that we do have the choice of a sidewalk, uh, to get throughout the community.
We do, we do have, just so you know, on Williamson Boulevard, as you know, we, we constructed, or we facilitated the construction of that, four lane divided median, upgraded landscaping, and eight foot sidewalk on the, uh, west side of Williamson Boulevard, and our sidewalk network in Pod C and D will tie into that major sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, if you put sidewalk on one side of, I just wanna make sure that somebody has an opportunity to walk on a sidewalk to get throughout the, the community rather than have to go, have to go in the street to get to where-
And that, and that is what is our, our intention as well, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to speak to this, Robert, come on down.
Commission members, Robert Ryan Hagan, fourteen twenty-five, Dexter Drive, Port Orange. I did not realize when I was first going through this that, that the earlier phase that they already have some townhouses there. Um, because it would seem to me that if they had planned townhouses there, uh, they should've had some option already so that they could have townhouses in this phase. But in generally, in looking through this, um, I can almost understand the previous approval of the setback for the air conditioning units because of the, uh, larger size that's required. And, um, but, but still, you know, these, this developer contends to be, uh, professional, and, uh, having missed that, okay, they, they got caught, but, but now, they should've had plenty of time to reevaluate and redesign these, uh, units so that they could have the appropriate amount of distance on the side. Now, you're also talking, I heard, um, about something else, I didn't realize that, that this is gonna be made a more standard now, that they're gonna be able to use this smaller distance, this eighteen inches instead of the larger. If so, then you should be changing the, uh, development code, the Land Development Code to permit that. But, um, yeah, I, I think they've had plenty of time, and you know, these are all single level, so I would've thought they could've- level, so I would have thought they could have looked at making them two, two stories and reduce the, the footprint on the land, which would give them the extra room for, for more space on the side, and also would be something to help address the, the sidewalk issue. If, if, if the units are smaller, they, they take up less land, you can have sidewalks then. So, and to me, you know, this is the same developer who put up a, a plastic fence without a permit and, and said, you know, you guys can take it down, if you have me take it down if you want, but nobody ever did. Anyway, I recommend no. Thank you.
Thank you. Last comments from the commissioners, Lance? Oh, you, come on down.
Don't leave out Dan. He's got, he's got to clock in to get paid.
I didn't see any other hands.
Hi, I'm Daniel Hunter. I'm from the Cypress Head Master Homeowners Association. I happen to be the Vice President at the moment, and I'm here to kind of represent our interest in the project. Mr. Smith came to our HOA meeting last week and made a presentation, and we are definitely interested to know how their project's going to blend with ours, and, and are interested in that. We have worked with ICI previously. When they did the Williamson Boulevard improvements, we, we gave them permission to use our property to build a blended slope instead of putting in the fence along Williamson, and they also, in their master development agreement, incorporated the fifty-foot buffer that's been previously mentioned as, you know, kind of a, a nice neighborly thing to do when you have single-family residential next to single-family. They don't have to do that, so we appreciate that. We are glad that the, the word "townhouses" was solidified in the language, so it wouldn't be apartments or anything else in this particular zone, and a gentleman over here was talking about how it fit. The Cypress Head property adjacent to this, the limited area where they want the townhouses is a woods. It's a, it's a homeowners' association conservation area, and so, when he presented that to us, our board didn't have any problem with the townhouse infringing in what was set up as a single-family development only in the first three hundred feet adjacent to Cypress Head. They, and so, again, to your other question, further south, you're referring, south of this area, as I understand it, they cannot do that. They cannot do the townhouse thing, and that's particular interest to me, because that's where my house is. I am right there on the property line. One other, so we don't have a problem with that townhouse thing. We did have, I did broach a subject with Tim Berman about, since the applicant wants to tweak the language of the MDA for their benefit, wouldn't that be an opportune time for us if we'd noticed some language in the MDA that we thought could be fixed? And Tim said he didn't really want to go there on that. I had to deal with Mr. Smith, and I broached it with Mr. Smith, and he said, well, ICI doesn't really want to go there. So, I'm here asking that maybe the planning board might help us out in getting rid of picnic pavilions and picnic tables right behind the single-family homes in the southern portion, the next pod, because the language, the only permitted use in the three hundred-foot zone is single-family detached and passit parks, and when you get into the MDA agreement, the definition of passit parks includes picnic pavilions and picnic tables, and I don't think that's something that we would necessarily like there. So, I would, I would prefer the staff maybe amend their staff report for that benefit.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? None? Lance?
No. And again, you know, I, I've, I've been on this board for, you know, how long?
Hundred years.
This, this buffer is, you know, is one of the things that's really important. I think it's important to both neighborhoods. In this particular case, and in this particular pod, you know, we're, we're really not affecting the main, the main, my main thing is how we button neighborhood to other houses and other neighborhoods, and in this particular case, we're buttoning this neighborhood against the woods, which is what we're after. We're after that natural buffer. So, we're talking about the three hundred feet, and what's going to be allowed within the three hundred feet. So, I, I don't really see an issue with this based on where it is. I would have a problem with this if it was creeping anywhere south, but yeah, okay.
Newton?
I would like to talk about the plastic vinyl fence on the ninety-five front, because I remember it was about two years ago when ICI came before this board and asked for us to retroactively approve the variance for that fence, that they told us that FDOT or them would make it right to do some landscaping on that fence. And as of Saturday, when I had to drive to New Smyrna and Edgewater, there is no landscaping in front of that fence. There's some nice tall weeds, probably could be mowed and tidied up, but we were told two years ago that they would be back to us asking for things before they finished Woodhaven, and that FDOT or they would make the fence look right. And that hasn't happened. So, I, if the applicant would like to address that, that would be great.
You weren't getting off easy tonight, Dick Smith.
No, and I, and I expected that, to be perfectly honest with you. Dick Smith, ICI Homes, sixty thirty-five Sanctuary Garden Boulevard. You're absolutely right. We did talk about that a couple of years ago, and we have had multiple and continuous conversations with FDOT about that. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of leverage with them, but we, it has been a sidebar conversation to some pretty significant conversations we've continued to have about other issues pertaining to the interchange and so forth. And we have continued to be promised that, that, that will come to fruition, but unfortunately, I can't tell you when, and I can't tell you the extent of that, but we are still, it's still on our radar, and we're still pushing for that.
Do you have space on the other side of that fence, on the ninety-five side?
On the ninety-five side is where the, the DOT plantings would go.
You have no space out there at all?
On our side?
Yeah.
We could do some plantings there.
No, 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 is there any space between you and the fence and ninety-five?
Yeah, similar to what.
Or is the fence on the line?
Any of it yours?
FDOT did quite a bit of planting to the south of where we're talking about a while back. We're asking for additional planting to the, to the north, and so, the expectation, our request of them, has been to effectively finish the planting going to the north.
But you don't have any space between your land, between your fence and ninety-five?
We could, but, but the fence is kind of on the peak of the mound over there.
Perfect. It'd be perfect.
Any planting would be well below that, unfortunately.
It'd be on the mound.
Be going down the slope. Well, the, the fence is on the top, the peak of the mound, and then the slope goes down towards ninety-five immediately beyond that.
Back to my question, how much space do you have on the other side of that fence?
We have, we have, we do have space, we do have space, but it would, it, it wouldn't be effective immediately, I can tell you, the plantings. I fully expected that FDOT would have completed what we had hoped they had completed by now.
Only because you kind of move in a little more westerly as you come to the north, your fence versus, versus what they've done. And the part of the south is, is growing nicely.
Yes.
And everything else on, on the whole road is growing nicely. Everything you guys have done in the medians and, and along the strip is, is, and the new sign is, is nice. The fence is still an eyesore, don't get me wrong. Sorry, Newton, I want to take a thunder.
No, that's fine. Glad to have some more thunder.
You good, Newton?
I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stan? Good? Tom?
Well, I, Dick, I'd like to ask, ask another question here.
Sorry.
In regard to the fence, so, from, from what you, you said, Newton was absolutely right, you said you guys would be back here and with ideas and asking us to approve something to fix that, and from what I heard tonight, you have almost no control over that.
Well, I wouldn't say no control.
I didn't say that. I said you have almost no control.
Right.
So, promise of anything is not going to happen.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have leverage to get it done quickly, but I can tell you that we have a very good relationship with FDOT. Unfortunately, we're working in their timeframe. That, that's really the, the problem.
Which means this should be there in about twenty years.
Yeah, the same folks that put the lights in on Dunlop, and two years later, whatever. Yeah, I, I understand, I understand your pain. The problem is, we kind of expected an answer. We expected ICI to actually come through and perform, and you aren't going to be able to like we expected.
So, maybe if you could notify the staff when you do hear about something, so that we could get notified, maybe that would kind of keep us a little better up-to-date on the situation.
It's called FDOT time.
I get it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Not to keep harping on it, though, but, I mean, you, you do have ability, okay? You do have the ability to go over there and put water out there on the other side of that fence and plant plants. You do have the ability to do it next to the fence. So, you're waiting on FDOT, but you do have the ability to somewhat screen that fence right now. Obviously, it's an expense, I get it, and I don't know what it would take to make the fence disappear, but you waiting on FDOT, you're going to keep coming up in front of this board, and you keep getting the same thing. So, you do have the ability, it's a matter of what y'all want to do about it.
John, anything before he sits down?
Yeah, I learned the hard way to be a little more specific on my questions. Have you formally brought to their attention this situation in writing, where they are addressing it, and they're just so overworked, they're not answering, or it hasn't been formally brought to their attention yet in writing?
We've had, we've had personal face-to-face meetings where this has been discussed. Again, it's, 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 it hasn't been the main purpose of those meetings, it's been a sidebar to the meetings about the interchange, so as far as a, a formal request, I don't know that they actually have a process for that.
So, they're not really reviewing anything?
Effectively, they have told us that they have the ability and are willing to plant, extend the plants like they did on the, the, like we got, had them do, nor, south of the area that we're talking about, but again, I just don't have any leverage over them to get that done on our timeframe.
But ICI could do it.
Not, not in the DOT right-of-way.
I'm just trying to establish that there was an aggressive step of ICI to address this. No, it was just casual conversation.
Power pole, light easement.
Well, that's, that's my.
Yeah, we would be limited on what we could plant in there because of the overhead power line, but we have about twenty feet or so between that fence and the FDOT right-of-way, but again, it's, it's on a slope, so that by the time you got it far enough away from the fence, you'd be four feet, you'd be planting it four feet below the bottom of the fence, is my concern, so.
Which is DOT property.
But you guys planted something on the back of Water's Edge, that Pioneer Trail that has grown beyond, one of those houses, a viburnum, that is absolutely perfect.
Yeah, it took a while.
It did.
Took a while, yeah.
It did, but it did its job, it's doing its job.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much.
He's still at the floor, by the way.
Oh, yeah. Were you done?
Before you snatched my.
Snatched the thunder.
And again, what I'm just trying to explain to the board is, it hasn't been officially presented in a document from a representative of ICI about that fence issue. It's been talked about, and it's been politely swept under the rug, okay? So, I mean, if I saw the document that they had dated it two years ago when we brought it to their attention, I would be content knowing that this is being tied up in, in, in the DOT situation, but it has never formally been presented to them to be addressed. So, I'm not content with the answer. So, that's, that's my opinion.
Well, again, I think what you're being told here is, they're having discussions about the interchange down, interchange down the street, and like you said, it's a sidebar, it's, it's not on the front line.
We, we followed the same process where we were successful previously, but perhaps we need to change, change the, the approach.
Be a little more aggressive.
Well, we've been, we've been aggressive, and we brought it up each time. Again, it's, it's been a, a part of a discussion about some other issues.
Got it.
Well, I think you understand the importance of it, too, especially with this phase, this, this project's another crown jewel for Port Orange, and I think it behooves you guys to, to make it look good from ninety-five just the same, especially with the work you guys are putting in on the interchange. The wall is an eye, I mean, the fence is an eyesore, we've talked about that. If we could do something about it in, you know, down the road, and it can be accomplished, you know, without trying to wait for DOT, obviously, it would be a good thing for you guys as well.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If no more commissioner comments, I will entertain a motion. Public comments?
Oh, public comments?
Oh.
We already did.
We already did public comments.
Oh, we did? Okay.
I was like, wait, I could support.
Make a motion to approve case number two zero dash four zero zero, I have lost zeros here, four zero 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 three.
Second?
Roll.
John Junko?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
No.
Lance Green?
Yes.
Newton White?
No.
Stan Schmidt?
Yes.
Chair Mills Benet?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Item number eight, case number two zero dash four zero 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 four, Second Amendment to the Riverwalk amended and restated master development agreement, approve the Second Amendment to Riverwalk amend and restated master development agreement. Tim Berman.
Good afternoon, or good evening now, Tim Berman, Community Development. This is the Second Amendment proposed for the Riverwalk project. What this will do is basically essentially two things. The MDA amendment would remove the date requirement to record the nine-lot subdivision on the property. That basically was put in initially to ensure that the city received ownership of the park, which is called Track Day, and all the necessary easements there. That has already been accomplished through another means other than the plat then. The city currently owns Track A, which is twenty-three feet, the trail, and all the necessary easements to go back and forth on the property have been secured already. Therefore, it is not a requirement from the city's standpoint that that plat be recorded. Therefore, it's just another date that we have to manage and meet, which we prefer, those are not really necessary in MDA amendments, to get rid of those then. So, again, this is basically being removed, the city is in support of it, because we've essentially received what we set out to get there, and this basically removes the date from MDA movement that has to be targeted. The second item has been the applicant is requesting to extend the timeframe to complete the Phase One improvements, along with the issuance of a CO for the restaurant on the point. Again, that basically, this is kind of the graphic here that shows you Phase One, is it highlighted in green what those site improvements and area is. Blue is the part of Phase One that was completed, the trail. Again, the, this would extend it to September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. There's also been language added in the need of a extension after that timeframe that is up to the authority of the council, can make a determination to extend it up to six months, provided that all required rough-in, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections have been held and approved in order for them to qualify to be able to make that request to council for an additional six months if needed. Again, the applicant's making the request, they are here. If you have any further questions regarding the project, as a status of where we are with it, we've had the site plan approved, the building permit for the restaurant has been resubmitted to staff, it is currently under review by city staff, and the, the other important part was the seawall repair work that has to be done. That permit has been approved by staff, and I believe the other outside review agencies are currently reviewing that. So, there has been movement in terms of permitting on this project, and the applicant can further discuss the construction timeframe. Staff recommendation is approval on these items.
Questions for Tim, John?
No, not at this time.
Tom?
So, the, it embeds the ability for them to have another six months with only council approval?
Correct.
Beyond the one year that they're asking for now?
Right, but they have to meet specific deadlines there, the rough-ins have to be, essentially, you, the idea I thought was, is basically that if we need another month, two months to get the restaurant completed, we'd have to go through a three-and-a-half, four-month process to get that date amended.
Right.
So, that basically caveats there, if you've got a, you know, building that has had the rough-in inspections, means it's pretty well.
It's started.
Started, it's basically the main component there, you're basically working on the interior there, so you are close to finishing up, so we wanted to put that caveat in there, because these constantly coming back, there's a lot of staff time that goes through to basically bring an amendment just to change essentially one number from, on there then, so that's basically what that was for. And again, that would be up to council decision, and they have to meet the specific requirements that we outlined in here in terms of the inspection process.
Well, there was a, a church property that drove us nuts for four years after we gave them three, plus the one-year building permit, so we're talking a year and a half here, plus they could come back and ask for another extension. Plus, they could come back and ask for another extension.
I, I thought, didn't council deny an extension for them at one point?
Nope. Last night, last year, this went before council and it was approved. Basically, the First Amendment was approved.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So then this council will see this one coming up here then.
Yeah, thanks, Tim.
Stan?
Just wanted to clarify.
Wasn't in the original deadline, wasn't there a console flexibility on that also?
Not basically the approved original one. There was not the, there was there was basically a difference. The trail had to be done by a specific timeframe, which was, I believe, November of two thousand nineteen, and this was basically two thousand twenty there. Now, the trail's completed, so we only have one timeframe we're working with then.
Right.
Newton?
I believe, when I spoke with you, you told me that the initial plans submitted for the seawall work and stuff wasn't submitted until sometime in March or April?
The building permit came into us in March, and the seawall came in around the same time.
And the original completion date, the occupancy date of this building for the restaurant was supposed to be in September of this year?
Yeah, according to the MDA amendment, they're basically September twentieth, two thousand twenty.
So they submitted plans in March for a building, just submitting the plans, not even having the plans finalized or a building permit issued in March for a building that's going to take months to build and be open in September? Sounds like they were a little tight on submitting the plans and planning to build a building when they don't even have a permit issued yet.
Yeah.
So they were in no way, shape, form, or fashion, even three months ago, able to complete this building without an extension. That seems a little
Little tight.
Not quite genuine in planning to have a building open in the first place in September. Got a question?
That's more of a statement, I think, for the applicant. I mean, from the city's standpoint, we process and review when we get them in. We had also met with them on numerous occasions, starting, being back in the January. There's a lot of planning that goes involved on these things. There are pre-application meetings at a timeframe too. So it wasn't that it just came into us March. We've had continued conversations with them. The site plan that basically we referenced, that came in early, or that came in late last year. So the site plan had been reviewed and processed then, so there was activity in terms of the plans last year. The applicant can speak more to the construction timeframe and timeframe of their project then.
Lance?
You done? I'm curious to know between the first application for permit, rebuilding permit, I mean, obviously, comments go out from Rob Harrell, Plan's Examination. We have now resubmitted to respond to those comments, correct? Is that what we're doing?
Correct, yeah. We, we, the resub, it's in our, it's on our hands now, and we basically have our staff that's currently had that under review.
Do you know the, the stat, how long has that been and how long is? My concern is that we're talking about giving an extension. You're getting ready to give an extra six months by the council, because it might take you six more months to get the building permit. I don't want to come back here again and say, well, we're still six months off, even though we're roughed in or however it goes. I mean, we need to have a date that says from the building permit, we'll be done with the building by a certain time. I know, I understand permits are always deflect, are always the unknown. I tell you straight up, I could build your building in some amount of time from the permit. So, I mean, realistically, do we know if this permit's gonna happen, or we gotta keep going round and round and round in plan review, because it's happened?
Right, we've only had one plan review on this permit then.
And we've got a resubmit, right?
Resubmit, it's an expedited project. It will basically, we'll get the full attention of the staff and a quick turnaround to basically get that permit issued.
I know the difficulties of Plan's Examination here on a commercial building. I know it. Johnny knows it. It's tough.
We comply with the Florida Building Code.
I know. I just, I, I just hoping that we're realistic about these dates and him being able to get a building permit to go to work.
We are committed to basically getting a building permit out. We are working with the applicant. We will get the building permit out. It's not gonna be issued on our part for not getting a building permit out. That's why the deadline's not met.
Okay.
Good? Yep.
So, all right, so we've had the initial review. You're coming back. You guys will look at it. It'll go back to them. There might be more bouncing back and forth?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then
Plus, the architect has to make changes, whatever they ask.
And then not only that, but this was a pretty significantly sized building, if I remember right.
Yeah, it is.
It's big.
You guys are in construction. Is it possible to get this thing slapped together by September next year?
Well, again, I mean, just qualifying that with
I know.
From, construction time from a building permit, that's, that's one thing. I, I can't answer to the permit. We'll want to talk to the applicant about that one.
But from, from the permit to construction, finish construction?
Would you build it in a year? I mean, probably, you could build it in a year, you know?
Wouldn't we, when would you have had to have started this project to get it done by September of this year?
Oh, you had to start with September last year.
Don't forget, all the underground utilities have to be done first. You gotta start doing all the stormwater and everything.
Well, the way the site's developed though, there's a large, there's basically, it's almost separated by the trail, so you can basically be working on the site improvements on the one side.
Right.
There, there basically does allow for base construction on that then.
And basically, we're at a point here, you know, you, we have to approve this or we're setting them up for failure. There's no way they're getting this done by September of this year.
Tim, you had Phase One that was already completed.
Started last year.
Well, Phase One that was completed was the trail project there. It was, it was initially wrapped up in the original MDA as a trail, the, all that was all at one phase. So we want to show that basically that was, you know, completed, not part of this extension at all.
That was their responsibility to do Phase One?
Correct.
Okay, so they've, they've, they've spent money, they've performed, and, and I'm looking at the devil's advocate from his perspective. You don't want a premature, he's committed. He submitted drawings, which we've been here for fifteen, twenty years, and getting that area developed has been quite, quite a task. So there is honorable intentions from the developer. They've received the application and they've received revisions. Since, from what I've seen the last twenty years, it's already committed from them, so I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt.
They had a bond they had to post
Yeah.
against not building the, the trailhead.
Well, I'm just saying, we've gotten a lot farther than we've done twenty years ago. And, and that should be recognized.
All right, Mr. Brock?
Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Jeff Brock, four 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 Seabreeze Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida, representing the developer, Joseph Famous Tenetoski, who is here. Company's called Halifax River Partners. To your comment, he spent one point two million dollars building that park. And so he's committed. He was out there this week replacing ten palm trees that died. So he's, he's definitely committed. So where we're at on the restaurant, we had significant delays with our design team. What the problem was is they needed to talk to the manufacturers. There's some specialized kitchen equipment. They're gonna have three kitchens that was shut down during COVID. They couldn't get the answers that they wanted, so we've had significant delays getting our final MEP plans put together. We do have a seawall permit. We are waiting on comments from the court. We have a site permit. We've applied for the building permit. We are coming out of the ground. We're gonna, you're gonna see activity there. We are committed. You're exactly right. It's the design. That was the delay. You're just like, why didn't the plans get submitted in time? To make a building, a realistic building schedule, it's because we didn't have the plans done, and it was our, our architect.
Would have known further back that there was a problem, I would be a lot more comfortable with knowing further back that there was a problem.
Right. Well, we were, like, like Tim said, we've been in constant communication with, with staff, and they've been very good to work with. They have expedited reviews. This is part of being in the redevelopment zone, that they get a, we get a quick turnaround, so they've been, they are not the problem. So thank you for, to staff for that. I do have a little film I'd like to show you, so, because we, it's been a while since you've probably seen the
We would love to see a movie.
Yeah, see a movie, get some popcorn. Can you help me with that, Tim? I'm not sure how your system works here.
Gosh, Tim, you didn't even bring us popcorn.
You've been putting some, some videos on YouTube, I think.
I don't know if that's our tenant or not.
It's been shared by the mayor and city council. They're very excited about it, so, yeah, I was able to see that.
You ready to hear?
Yeah, go ahead. So it is a, it is a thirteen thousand square foot restaurant, so it's
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's a story. Yeah, a lot of outdoor.
Makes me want to be a chef again.
So you're pretty solid with the tenant, too. I mean, with all this COVID stuff, that's kind of a hit to the restaurant.
They actually are doing better this month than they did this month last year, because they have a lot of outdoor seating. And they have a large parking lot that they let them put people out in the parking lot, and they've done well. They're very good.
Because that was the other thing I was thinking, too. If they're getting chewed up by COVID, are they gonna have the money to come through, or are your, is your rental agreement in danger?
You know, an issue, because they worship that.
I'm not gonna be calling anybody at this meeting.
Pike down, Lance.
Whoa, wow.
That's pretty.
That is cool.
Yeah, it's got, it's got some Jimmy Buffett music on it.
Makes me want to be a chef again.
Wow.
Kind of looks like the News Journal Center almost.
Yeah, it does a little bit, actually. Hopefully, it'll stay cleaner on the outside than the News Journal Center.
Probably didn't pay the copyright.
Go ahead and
Just sing for us, yeah, just sing for us.
What's one to your favor?
Love the tiki bar.
Wow, what a beautiful, beautiful building.
So that's gonna be looking out at your wonderful bridge view there.
Wow, that's gonna be a great feature for Port Orange. Come on in.
Listen, the food in this place better be good. I'm gonna, I have high standards. Y'all know me.
I think one of the city commissioners went down to their restaurant in Stewart and was impressed with it.
They don't, they're not as picky as me. I was a chef, so I'm really picky.
So again, it's gonna have three different kitchens. One could be a sushi bar and, and different fairs, but their menu and everything's online. There's nobody more excited to try to get this going and get this out of the ground than my client, you know? We all know time is money and et cetera.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
It's beautiful.
Yep, we have a signed lease, so we are committed to going forward. Thank you.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Any questions for me?
Lance, questions?
So, yeah, so and again, just to follow up, I mean, the, the design team is, basically got, gathered everything they need. I know we've resubmitted. And, and hopefully, in, in your mind, are, are we looking at a permit here pretty soon?
And the plans have been sent out for subcontractors to bid on, so we're getting an awarding of the subcontractors.
But you have a general contractor already chosen.
Right, the same one that did the park.
Perfect.
And he's, he used to work with staff and your roles for permits.
Okay.
He tells me you can, you know, he can get it done by September, so I'll have to trust him that doesn't work.
Again, I agree with you on the first table.
We don't have a permit.
Once you get a permit, then you can say when you'll be done, but you, until you get that permit, and I, and I understand that pain there upfront. So hopefully, once you guys get, get approved and get that permit, you'll, you'll be able to move forward.
Newton?
I'm good, yeah.
Stan?
I think we're good to go. Let's just get this thing rolling.
Tom?
I'm good.
John?
No, I think, I think being a little extra patient, knowing how far you've gone along, it's gonna be well paid off. And plus the fact I'm actually walking distance to your new restaurant, so, so I'll be looking forward to, to coming there quite often. So, no, I'm good. I'm excited.
Bring a lot of people down to your park.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would think so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? I think all we got left is Robert. None? Last commissioner comments, Lance?
No, I'm just gonna say it's about time. Looking forward to it.
Sure.
Newton?
I'm good.
Stan?
We're good.
Tom?
No.
Sean?
Nope.
All right, I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case number twenty dash four zero 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 four with the recommendations from staff. Whatever they are, if there are any.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can I have the roll, please?
John Junko?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Lance Green?
Yes.
Newton White?
No.
Stan Schmidt?
Yes.
Chair Mills-Benay?
Yes. All right. Item number nine.
And if you'd also like to open ten in the same room?
I actually was gonna ask you, can I open them both? Item number nine and ten. Case number two zero dash two zero 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 three. Large-scale comprehensive plan and amendment for four zero five seven Bruner Road. And case number two zero six zero 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 four. Administrative rezoning, rezoning acres from Volusia County Rural Mobile Home to City of Port Orange Government Public Use. And eight point one acres from City of Port Orange Multi-Family Residential to City of Port Orange Government Public Use.
Good evening. Good evening. Don't be curious planning. So the first item before you is the request to change the future land use on the subject property you see outlined here in blue. It's about eighteen point seven acres going from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to City of Port Orange Public Institutional. You can see it's located on the east side of Bruner, near the water plant, property commonly referred to as the gray property, right behind the police station. If this is approved, the city plans to use the subject property as a debris management site. Over the past few years, you may know that cities had to either find whatever available property we had or contract with local landowners to handle debris management after hurricanes, other disasters. So having a, a permanent site is really key and provides certainty for the city as we prepare and plan for hurricane season. So the city purchased this property in March, and we're moving through the process now. After planning commission, this land use amendment, the rezoning, as well as the annexation of the property, because right now it's an unincorporated enclave, we'll be going to city council, moving through that process to apply that city land use and zoning on it. The city's intent is to keep that property vacant until it's needed for debris management. So you can see here the future land use amendment going from the, the urban low intensity county category on the left to the public institutional category over on the right. All public infrastructure has been reviewed, has available capacity. Just want to note, though, that the actual use of the property as a debris management site will be significantly less intense than that theoretical maximum analysis we're required to do by state that you see in the staff report. So the second item is the rezoning. For the, the first piece, there's two parcels that are included in the rezoning. The first piece is, again, the proposed DMS site here, and the second piece is that, that property that's commonly referred to as the gray property there. So the, the first property, the, the proposed DMS site, as well as the, the gray property, they're both proposed to be rezoned to GPU, Government Public Use. The land use isn't being changed for the gray property because we have that policy in the comprehensive plan that allows for public institutional uses to be allowed in a variety of different land uses. You might recall last month, we had the Thrive Church here, had a residential land use on it, that the zoning was gonna be GPU. So similar situation, no need to spend additional money in advertising and legal fees and things like that to change the land use there when it's allowed by, by code. So just the, the zoning is being changed on these properties to GPU. There isn't a definite proposed use for the gray property at this time. Staff is exploring the possibility of relocating the public utilities field operations office from its existing location on Oak Street to this property, if it's determined to be favorable. That construction may occur within the next three years, and we have the public utilities and public works director here to answer any questions about that that you might have as well. So with that, staff's recommending approval. Can I answer any questions you might have?
John?
Just pure curiosity on that Bruner Lot, that large pond, is that a stormwater?
It's, it's been there for a long time. This site has historically been kind of used as a debris site, not necessarily debris management the way we're gonna use it. The environmental report talked about some old, like, construction debris and things like that that were used on the site. Who knows what's in that pond? It has, the site has been designated by Volusia County back in two thousand and six as a brownfield site. It's, it's disturbed land. Um it's it's disturbed land, so which is fine for what the city intends to use it for.
So what is the water there? Is it just a natural pond or is it?
No, I think that was dug up a while ago.
Oh, it's 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 okay. So it's under the water table and it's just full. Okay. All right, I was curious, cause you know, if you're gonna start, that that's half your lot right there.
I had a borrow pit at one time many years ago.
Yeah, that's a lot of property there that there.
I was gonna say, there used to be due cases digging there.
It could be, if you need a place to throw fill and have use of the other half of the lot, that wouldn't be a bad idea. All right, no, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I've got a question. If I'm understanding on the use of it is for de- as a debris field. I recall when they were doing the debris field from the hurricane and they over there in the old, well, in the New River Side Park there, where it was just a big empty lot at the time. Is that what we kinda think we're talking about?
Yeah, we used that site. Um we also used um the what's now being developed as King's Landing. We were able to lease that property on point. So basically, um you get the debris from the the streets after hurricane or from residential properties. Um they're able to haul it over here. It's able to be chipped and reduced down until it goes down to the out to the landfill. So, yeah, it's just kind of like a storage area to get all that debris cleared off the streets, get the city functioning again after hurricane.
My concern was initially that that field that they used over there on on uh on Ridgewood. There seemed to be a ton of of uh dust and particles flying all over the place. It went all over the neighborhood there. Until they came in and did some, I think they did some spray down with water. I'm just concerned about the neighbors around this property and getting any kind of.
I'm not familiar with any of the complaint, the complaints, and maybe Lynn can speak more to that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lynn Stevens, Public Works Utilities Director. So, yes, you are correct. There was quite an issue with dust when we used the Riverwalk. That was for Hurricane Matthew.
Right.
Um the site was very, very small, so that was part of the problem. The nice part about the lake on the Bruner Road property, we have water already established that's not going to drain our resources from our potable water supply. We'll be able to use water from the lake to use it for dust control.
Okay.
This this site is also much larger than the area that we were confined to on the Riverwalk property.
Yeah.
So we have a lot more space. Our intent is not to do anything with the lake. Our intent is to keep a a uh right now, there's a berm around the property that abuts towards the north where the homes are. So our plan is to leave that there, so we can screen it. We have the water plant to the one side and the city owns the other property on the other side.
So really, it's just the stuff, the properties are to the, I guess, east that are kinda exposed?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And and the goal is to never have a hurricane, so we never have to need the property.
Welcome to twenty twenty.
Wow. Good luck with that.
Welcome to twenty twenty.
Hopefully you some, you know somebody upstairs that I don't.
So when we go through all this effort, you have to go through the water usage and the sewer usage and all that kinda stuff. Um is there uh like a toilet facility or sinks or something out there already or?
No, sir.
Nothing wrong?
There is nothing out there. There is not planned to be anything out there.
Okay.
When the debris management contractor comes in, they're responsible to erect a a tower so they can see inside the vehicles when they come in to measure the amount of debris coming in. They're also required to handle their own uh facilities, sanitary facilities, so there will be no permanent structures out there.
And then the other thing.
You've been through this, haven't you?
Somewhere in here, there was, they were talking about the gopher turtles out there. Is that? When you're having to do debris management, what do you do on that? Just ask them to move over for a little while or?
So so we have done a survey. Um we have tried to go in and see what we have there, and that's when we've we've discovered that we do have a lot of construction debris out there already and a lot of yard waste that's been left behind. So we know there's quite a bit of cleanup that has to occur on this piece of property. We'd like to be able to do that before there's an emergency situation. So we're ahead of that that curve. We're also working with DEP to go ahead and pre-apply as a DMS site on this this property. We've done the soil sampling on the site. That's all come back good. We've done the gopher tortoise and and other uh critter uh designations and identifications out there. There are about twenty of them out there. They're identified. We have a company that's going to come in and relocate on the west side of the lake. We're going to relocate those gopher tortoises, whatever's around the lake and to the east of the lake, we'll let them be. Because we don't have any intent to do anything over there other than mow the property, and that does not require their relocation.
Stay put. And the hurricane's stay away. Yeah, it all works.
We'll have to put some silk fence around the property because if they do, I believe there's there's some uh building that's going to be proposed to the other side of this property, to the, I guess, the west.
West.
Um so we are gonna put a silk fence up to try and keep the turtles from there coming on to our property, so we don't have to relocate them again. Uh we will be relocating them out to the city site out off Shunt's Road. We we have the turtle bank out there, so we have some reservations set aside for those guys to live their life.
Does that, is that a problem when you're when you actually have debris? Do you have to do something? I mean, you're gonna be piling tons of debris parts on there.
So that is. Yes, sir. So that is one of the delays with setting up a debris management site. A lot of people say, why aren't you picking up debris? You have to have a site ready to take it, and that is one of the things that we've had to do. We had to do it on Hensel Road. Uh they had already cleared the property on in in Riverfront, so we didn't have to do it there. But Hensel Road, we were held up. We had to change our plan with what property we were gonna use there. We had to fence off a certain perimeter around the turtle nests to make sure we didn't disturb them, or we had to relocate them, and that took time. So we're we're trying to get ahead of the curve, so if hopefully not, but if if we do have to
Yeah.
prepare for a storm, we're ahead of that curve. We're trying to do everything preemptively so we can take care of our city as quickly as possible.
You good, Stan?
Yeah, uh I guess, and then of course, we're a- apparently the west side, there's already a multifamily housing that's somewhere in the process of. So they they understand that they're gonna be butted up against this debris management field.
Yes, I mean, this is this is all public record. This property's been posted like every other property. Um you know, we're part of their team is here today listening to this right now. Um but yeah, and that application is under review. It may come before you in the next month or two.
What other uses would there be for this particular land if we have no storm? What?
Nothing.
None.
Just gonna stay there and?
Turtle.
It will just sit there and we will mow it periodically and keep it in in good shape. That is our intent. We will leave this property vacant.
Perfect. Really, I mean, because when you need it, you need it, and when you don't, you.
Can sit there and look pretty.
Small it.
Kinda like you, Newton. Lance?
Uh thank you, and and thank you for putting in the time in which you have to to research this. It's important uh in the long run that we know what the property really is and what we can do with it, what's on it, and and what our future is. Um you know, like like Tom said, my whole thing is, you know, when we do go to use it, you know, do we, we've gotta respect the neighborhood, if you will. This particular site gives us a much better opportunity to to keep things clean and to keep things more contained. Um and these are things that a lot of people in the city don't understand is, you know, like you said, you gotta have site ready to be able to dump tremendous amount of debris that we took on during Matthew and those, and this is this is a great site for it. And um like I said, uh thank you for putting in the the time that you did on it.
Absolutely.
Um I'm just curious, is there a house still on the gray property?
Uh it was recently burned.
Did it?
Uh we we.
I didn't realize that.
You know, uh.
Gopher turtles did it.
We took ownership of the property last year. Uh the we allowed the police department to use it as training for a few months.
Yep.
And then we allowed the fire department to use it as training.
Oh, I missed that memo.
So they have they have used it as a training activity to burn the properties down. There were three buildings on there.
Yeah.
So they did burn them down, and we are now obtaining quotes to remove the rest of the debris.
I grew up on Madeline Road and geese used to chase me from that property when I was a kid, so.
So.
Brings back so many memories.
So the gray property is different than the proposed DMS, just.
Yes, yes.
Commission notes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Great job.
Comments from the public? Crickets. All right, so if there's no more commissioner comments, anyone? No? Then I will entertain a motion.
Hey, you want a motion on both or you want a motion on one?
Um we can do both same time, correct?
Separate motion.
Separate, okay.
Make a motion to approve case number, oh, where am I here? Shoot, sorry. Case number two zero dash six zero 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 four.
One more.
Yeah.
Number nine.
Hmm?
You went to ten.
You went to ten. You need number nine.
Oh, I was miss- oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Let's change it to two zero dash two zero 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 two.
Three.
Get it right.
Which one you want?
Three.
Number nine is three I'm looking at.
I'm looking at, it says two.
So it says.
Two.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the actual staff report. It says three.
I'm looking at the.
I'm looking at the staff report.
It does. The agenda.
I'm looking at the staff report. It says three.
The agenda says two.
So which it, you're right, it does. So which is it?
Two or three.
Wait, does any of me by the moat?
I don't make these agenda.
Shelby's likes, Shelby's likes, not me, not it.
Clear her.
Find the application name, two twenty dash one, large scale comprehensive plan amendment.
There you go.
I'll withdraw that motion. I'll make a motion to approve twenty dash, staff report twenty dash one, large-scale comprehensive plan amendment for four zero five seven Bruner Road.
Second.
Roll call, please.
John Junko?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Lance Green?
Yes.
Newton White?
Yes.
Stan Schmidt?
Yes.
Chair Mills Benet.
Yes. Next one.
Look at me, I already messed up.
Say the address.
Number ten. Does have the same number, so I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll move that we approve case number two zero dash six, followed by seven zeros and a four.
Any seconds?
Six zeros, by the way.
It's six zeros.
Accountant. Hey, I'm only got one.
Yeah, we're not at a top game today, are we?
All you people are fired tonight.
No wonder I owe taxes.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Roundy.
John Junko?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Lance Green?
Yes.
Newton White?
Yes.
Stan Schmidt?
Yes.
Chair Mills Benet.
Yes. Woo, that was rough.
One more to go.
Last one, case number eleven, or item number eleven, case number two zero dash two five zero 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 three. LDC Amendment, Chapter twenty, Ridgewood Corridor Improvements, Amendments to Chapter twenty of the Land Development Code regarding the Ridgewood Targeted Business Program.
Evening, I'll be curious planning. Um.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
Nice of you to be here with us.
So the proposed code amendment is to improve upon the current um adopted strategies to encourage redevelopment of targeted businesses along the Ridgewood Corridor. This amendment for you tonight includes two items. One is to extend the timeframe of the site improvement waiver program for two more years. And the second item is to expand the list of the program of targeted businesses. Um as you recall, around December of two thousand and seventeen, the council approved this program as a three-year pilot program um that basically waived site upgrade improvements um for the list of targeted uh businesses, except for any improvements that were necessary for accessibility, um building or fire code. Um so any other kind of improvements were waived. And the intent behind that was to encourage redevelopment along the corridor, um allowing smaller mom and pop and local businesses to get started without that substantial upfront cost. You know, realistically extending this timeframe, um it could provide staff with just additional time to to promote this um and try to encourage more. We haven't had as many targeted businesses take up on, take this up as we would like. Um there have been s- um there have been some and some really, really good projects as well. Um but we'd like some more time to be able to try to further promote that and encourage people to go out there. It's been a tough time economically, too, but um you know, maybe some more time will help with that. So the next thing is the is the list um of uses. So over the past two and a half years, there have been um a number of other businesses that have inquired about whether they'd qualify for this targeted business program, but unfortunately weren't weren't on that list, um the the use that they fell under. Um so you can see over here on the left is the the current list, um on the right is what we're proposing to add to it. There were a couple businesses that although they weren't on the list, staff found ways to work with them to find sites um on the corridor that worked for them, that didn't need any upgrades anyway. So luckily, we weren't able to miss out on those businesses, because they were some, you know, pretty good businesses, job-producing um businesses. But that got us to thinking that, you know, maybe we need to expand this list because um, you know, we we need as much help as we can out on Ridgewood. And if some of these uses are good uses that, you know, provide good jobs for the community, good services, um so, you know, why not? Um so staff, staff is proposing these additional uses here. The staff report had definitions of all those uses. If you're interested in in what what goes into any of those uses, um and it's here to answer any questions you may have.
Awesome. Questions, Lance?
No, again, this is just um a continuation of the of the of the growth I think we need to 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 make things better on US one. And I think um I think uh what you guys have done here is is definitely gonna be an improvement. And and I I think as time goes on, we're we're getting better down there. We're looking better. And just just the buildings that we have here with the with the tackle shop and these other couple buildings that are they're looking better and we're getting some activity down there, I think this just helps uh helps broaden that horizon.
Newton?
Fleet services, fleet-based services. What are fleet-based services?
So, for example, um Dave's Pest Control qualifies under a fleet-based service. So um you know, they unfortunately weren't able to to meet that, but we were able to get them into that site. Um real good job-producing, um good service for the community, and we're working them with them um through a more of a different like phasing agreement to get the improvements made. Um so things like that, anything, you know, that you've got your fleet of trucks that go out and provide services, AC repair. So we actually, there was a, there was a business that wanted to go on US one, AC repair.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't a targeted business, couldn't put up that upfront cost to bring the site they were looking at up to code.
You're thinking eighteen-wheelers?
Well, I was, I was thinking vehi- fleet service. I was thinking, you know, some type of a truck service or car service.
Truck service, yeah.
No.
More mechanic shops.
That's a different use that's not included.
I.
The definitions are in your code in the last, the last page of the staff report, I'm sorry.
If you wanna read it.
You should read it.
But I wanna talk about it, too, so I can read, I can read and that I can talk about it, so that the going record is being concerned about fleet-based services.
Are you good?
I am.
Stan?
Yeah, I'm good. Initially, I was, you know, thinking about the personnel ser- or personal services, but you already exclude the uh pain management group, so we're good on that.
Tom?
I was curious, you mentioned Dave's and and the phase approach to it. It, what's the, what's the timeframe on his phasing?
They're um they're, we should be receiving their landscape plans, but we've already reviewed them in concept. So once they officially just come in, it will be able to approve them pretty quickly, because we've already seen concepts of it.
We're talking about, we're talking about both, I don't wanna say both parcels, both halves, I guess, the, okay.
Yeah, all three sides.
Hide their dumpsters.
Yeah, all three sides. Um so, yeah, so we've already looked at those plans. Um they're actually looking to do some, something really neat. I think you guys are gonna be really impressed when that site's done. Um they're actually working also with the University of Florida. Um they're gonna be doing Florida-friendly landscaping, and it's actually gonna be a featured site. They're gonna be um promoting it as far as the University of Florida um in some of their publications as well. Really neat design that there is, so I I'm excited for you guys to see it when it comes out of the ground.
Good for them.
Like a green wall, if you will.
Very cool. Um no, just Florida-friendly materials. Um they also are looking to spell the word Dave's with landscaping. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be really unique and nice for that part of Ridgewood. It's gonna look really nice when it's all done. Um it's just giving them that time to to get the plan in place, get their business established and running there, get everything going. Um.
He's already established.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, but but along that that corridor, if we, and that's the next, next thing I, we, I think we all wanna see is the is the appearance.
Mm-hmm.
And his his property obviously could benefit. He could benefit, so I think that's some really exciting stuff.
And he also stated, you know, they go out and they do services for for people's lawns, and so they want their site to look really good because they're promoting these services, so.
Right.
He's a smart guy.
It's just, it's just being able to give them the time to do it instead of saying you can't open until it's done.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I agree with that. No, I think that's gr- it's great to work with them like that. The only other two questions I had was really, or the concerns I had was the retail home, I think it was retail home building supplies?
Yeah, yeah, so it would just be like a um a retail store that sells home building supplies, basically. It's, it just defines a different types of.
Yeah, and that's just like a true value hardware or?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just always lends itself to, okay, now we start putting material supply lots out there again.
Well, we do have in the um if you, the strike through an underline where you saw the proposed language, it does say that uh anything that's outdoor storage would need to be screened.
Right.
You know, so that's the only kinda site upgrade with these new uses that we're adding, um that is, it still needs to happen. I mean, that's a simple. I mean, that's a simple fence permit, so we're not asking for a lot.
I get that, but I mean, I look at Massey and and his.
That's a different, that use isn't even allowed anymore out there.
No, no, I'm just talking about his fencing, is the 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 way he covered it, it just, it it just doesn't work down there. It it, it meets requirements, I know it's exactly what what they said, but um, it just doesn't work for me. And then the other one was the convenience store without gas, so.
Like a, I mean, if you think about Neighbors is almost a convenience store. They've got, you go in, you buy whatever different things you wanna buy. You can buy like a lotto ticket, or you can buy some.
Yeah, there's neighbors, there's neighbors and then there's the existing gas station that's down there, or the existing non.
It's like basically, it's basically a retail store, if you think about it, if it doesn't have gas.
Yep.
It's called a Jiffy.
Yeah, quick stop.
Okay, hey, thanks, Penny. That's good stuff, that's good stuff though.
John, now, is the Ridgewood Corridor just everything south of the Dunlaught, or there's a couple of trickled lots north of there?
No, so what you see here in red, when we adopted the Ridgewood Corridor plan, it was specifically for the property south of Dunlaught. And there's a lot of planning already north of Dunlaught and, um, you know, with the Riverwalk property and and it's part of the Riverwalk overlay zone. Um, but they're just, there needed to be a little bit more attention south of Dunlaught. And the the market on its own isn't doing it down there, so we, and we don't have money to give people, so we gotta do what we can regulatory-wise.
All right, thank you.
Got it. I have nothing. Comments from the public? Robert? No? You good? Okay, if there's no other commissioner comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve case number twenty dash two five zero 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 three.
Second.
Roll, please.
John Junko.
Yes.
Tom Jordan.
Yes.
Lance Green.
Yes.
Newton White.
Yes.
Stan Schmidt.
Yes. Yay, us. Okay, before I start this next thing, let me just tell you guys, we have to be out of here soon. By the rules and regulations of the COVID nineteen meeting, rules and regulations.
So what's that time?
So.
That depends all on Lance, so you gotta be specific.
I'm giving you guys forty minutes notice because I know you. So, commissioner comments? We'll start with Lance.
Really? Um, and this one's just a a general comment, Tim.
Yeah, Tim, you might as well come up.
You know, we wanna, we wanna learn from our past and our mistakes, and you see what's going on in the country today, and we're tearing things down. And we're, we're tearing down statues of our past, and it's who we can learn from our past. And so maybe we could go tear down the Waffle House sign. It's for sale, buy it, tear it down. Because I'm catching a lot of grief from my fellow members here about that particular issue.
The thought has crossed my mind many times.
To tear Lance down or the sign?
Isn't there a political sign as big as the Waffle House sign there now?
Just about.
Yeah, I thought of you when I drove by.
No, I'm just kidding, Tim.
Is it closed now?
I saw where, um.
It's it's closed and it is.
It's for sale. I I don't understand.
And Lance, I'm a realtor, I'd be happy to write this contract for you.
Sell it with no sign.
And that is one of the things that when we do get redevelopment on there, we will talk to them, see if we can whittle down that size, that sign.
No, Tim, again, I just wanna say, um, again, I I wanna commend you guys and the staff for for what we've, where we've gone to at at Madeline and and Williamson. Uh, I think you guys have really done a good job at at following it through on this thing and making sure it happened. I'm pretty sure he got his final inspection on his site, if I'm correct.
The the basis, since the final one without, we went out there, I think, yesterday and did the walkthrough. So it gives a couple more time, the, you know, a couple more days to wrap up a few loose ends. There is few things that had to be done, but they're very, very minor, so it'll be, you know, completed here. And then we also included code enforcement in that um final walkthrough. That way they basically see kind of the final site then, because now, once you know, once we kinda give it, see, we're finalized with it then, it basically, you still have to maintain it then, and then that, you know, where code enforcement comes involved. So we wanted to bring them out with us then, that way have that transition set up for that property to keep it looking that way. And hopefully we get some development activity on there, and we get some uses um on that site then.
So many people have commented on 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 that progress, and you know, you don't, you don't really think about it until it's been as long as it has, how your, how your city reacts to that property. And I mean, that improvement has made a tremendous difference with a lot of citizens just wanting to mount, it's about time, you know.
Everybody keeps asking me what's going in it, and I'm like, nothing yet, but it doesn't look great.
Looks like now, you know what I mean, and it looks great. Uh, I see the street lighting on Dunlaught and finally happening, are they fired up? Are they hot?
No, they're not hot yet. We um have to get a couple inspections done for electrical, call into F P N L, and basically tie a couple, um, some paperwork then.
Is there gonna be a street lighting party?
We have not thought about that.
Six feet apart, please.
They were doing some wiring on them today.
That would uh.
I was, uh, I think if once that thing turns on, it's gonna be something really to see. I, it's gonna really make a big difference.
Yeah, we will be basically um putting some notices up there in terms of the um electric signs there to let everyone be aware when those come on then, since it will be kind of a shock that it's gonna be light there.
Yeah.
Even though there was walk lights there for twenty years.
No, it really is, it's gonna be a big difference, you know.
On that one then, so we will be working that, and we plan to get those energized here shortly.
So speaking of that, and one last thing, I'll let you go. Uh, we still got just broken down um streetlights all along Dunlaught and Williamson. The pink ones, you just got wires hanging, we've talked about this. Is there anything we can do about it? Are we doing anything about it?
We basically have to, if we're in the same situation we were with that segment between U S one and Spruce Creek. Some of those are on private property, some are on city property. Um, the thought would basically is to continue doing a, you know, applying for the same grant that we did before, to basically get those changed out. Also looking to, to see which ones are in the right of way, to see if it's worthwhile just to remove those.
Yeah.
For the most part, they're not plugged in, or they're not, so it's not going to remove light from there. It goes back to that detail where we had private developers put lights on our right of way. But then they were basically powered into their individual businesses, so each there then. So it's something that we are, you know, working on to try to get that resolved. We've been focusing right now, just get that that segment done on um U S one to Spruce Creek. And that will allow us now to kinda, you know, refocus on where we can go from there. Uh, but the area that you're talking about with the kind of the pink flamingo lights would probably be the best place to look at. There's a smaller corridor.
Yeah.
To get some done, and you know, we found with the Ridgewood area there, Ridgewood to um U S one, very constrained corridor. So our staff had a lot of issues they had overcome with basically, you know, existing, you know, a lot of existing improvements in their constrained corridor. Moving further west, of course, it opens up a lot wider.
It's disappointing because it's newer, you know what I mean, and I get it. And and unfortunately, there's not one of them work, not one of them on any corner work.
I mean, we had to go with those white, there were those white lights that were in that corridor we just did. We had essentially, I think, we had to go to thirty-five different individual businesses. And basically, in order to disconnect those there, and you know, some of those people, you know, you know, you go in there, like, I think this outlet works for, I don't know. And find out, they're like, oh, that's what that light switch was for.
Oh, wow.
The walk lights in, so it's gonna be the same situation out there because they're the same detail. Um, so it's basically, you know, get the one section completed, we learned our lessons from that. And now the next is to move on and try to tackle some more of that area.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Newton?
I was, and still am, a little upset about the appearance of those lights.
You've been upset all day.
Well, no, I was not, I was not, I only voted no.
Of course, yeah, I see that guy left crying. No, I'm just kidding.
You're talking about the the lights on Dunlaught?
Yeah, I was expecting to see something that was more Florida binocular looking, not I ninety-five.
Williamson and Dunlaught.
Well, to speak, I mean, basically, majority of the roofs along there are metal silver, the poles are metal silver, so it does match. And also too, we have had quite a bit of limited selection from F P N L.
Yeah, I get.
F D O T, and those were the easiest ones in terms of maintenance responsibility, because the city is required to maintain them. So in terms of looking for the financial of the city, those poles are selected. And as terms of the arm coming off there, that basically came back with F P N L power lines.
Power lines, right above them, yeah.
I guess you have to worry about too.
Yeah.
Which basically pushed those arms out then. Um, so we tried to get that as tight as possible. Basically, when you're dealing with F P N L, those are transmission lines, and we didn't wanna explore the cost of burying those lines.
Gotcha.
I mean, I saw that right away.
They're very modern.
I I I beat him on the head so hard, he went bald, so.
But our staff did a lot of work in certain areas, basically to resolve some of those, those conflict poles that not have to be. That's why there might be, you know, a row of conflict poles, the one with the arms and then the normal ones. Our staff was trying their best they could to eliminate the need for those conflict poles. But there was nothing we could do with, you know, the F P L requirements that we had to deal with, we had to work with them.
Almost like the railroad.
You good?
I'm good.
Stan?
On um Ridgewood, uh, next door to the fire section, to the, north of the fire section, we've taken out that lot. And now we're putting an underground enforcement that's gonna tie in to the riverside. Is that something you guys handle, or does?
Uh, that would've been a good question for Lynn Stevens' room.
Oh, sorry about that.
Public utilities, um, we can see, maybe she can come back, I mean, I know basically the drainage improvement project.
Yeah.
Um, I can look to see if we can get you some updates or just have her contact you, um, to provide you some information on that then.
Yeah, 'cause um my land, well, I'm I'm in the building next door to that, to the north. And uh, apparently, my landlord got a hold of the plans, and they were gonna burn, put a berm. He's got a, he's got a concrete wall there, and they were gonna put a berm to the south of that wall. And he said, just put the dirt up against the wall, I don't care, the matter of him. Because he said that way it would just be basically a bowl-shaped.
Yep, we'll talk to you, either Penny or I'll talk to you offline. And we'll basically get you some contact information, because it sounds like you guys need to just talk with our utilities department on that project then.
Okay.
Good. Tom?
I had one question and some comments. Um, the the house next to the old vans on Spruce Creek, they were gonna do the personal gym, wasn't it?
Oh, that's right.
I just want what to say, is it, they tore down the house, right?
Yeah, they tore, they relocated, they tore down, they relocated the house, the back then tore down the old decrepit one. And they've been into our staff for pre-application meetings with their design professional and their engineer. And their architects, so they're just working on those plans to submit here shortly then.
Good news.
They, you know, got through the rezoning, future land use process, and took the next step in basically getting their design professionals involved then.
Okay, and I wanted to echo on on Lance, Madeline Williamson, I know we just took you to town on that every, every month it seemed. But you guys did a great job.
We're gonna put a new requirement, no expedite requirements and an M D A again, told Penny, no more.
I am personally going to miss us, miss us asking every single month.
No, it looks great, it really does. It's a nice property now, it looks good. And I think working with code enforcement that way just makes so much sense.
Yes.
That just transitions into them making sure that it stays nice. And the community is just, I mean, their comments are, they're they're thrilled. Um, I'd be really impressed with the little minor traffic projects you've been doing, the takeout little medians there and uh, the one at Madeline and is it Clyde Morse?
Yep.
Just to help traffic flow better.
Yep.
Great jobs on those, and uh, I think the staff's been working really well with the uh, the multifamily projects. I know those are challenging and takes a lot of time, but you guys have been doing a good job with those.
Yeah, we see one of those coming up here in the next few months then.
Awesome. John?
Uh, no, I I was just curious, I I understand Daytona had a care program where they waived permit fees uh, in lieu of the coronavirus. Did Port Orange have anything similar to that?
No, Daytona's the only city, I believe, that did that.
Yeah, okay. Well, as a builder, that's pretty important information that I could pass along to my future clients. It's a, give me a window, I'll slip it in there, and you just save permit fees on there, so it's always good to know. Okay, I guess not.
Not when your building department has to be self-sufficient, I don't think you're gonna wanna waive the fees.
Yeah.
Not the fees.
Well, Daytona's a little bigger.
Yeah.
I had nothing, I just wanna thank you guys, we appreciate you guys so much, you do an awesome job, so thank you. And any staff comments, or are you done with us?
Oh, they're done with us, I'm sure.
Okay, any public comments? Robert? No, you good?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Meeting adjourned. All right.